This meeting of Monroe Township Board of Education is now in session. May I ask our student representative to lead us into pledge and everyone to please stand face the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Gorski, can we have a roll call?
Certainly. Mrs. Arminio.
Here.
Mr. Chirillo.
Here.
Mrs. Demeo.
Here.
Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Here.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Here.
Mr. Pelori.
Here.
Mr. Ryback.
Here.
Mrs. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. Tofano.
Here.
And Mr. Rutzke.
Here.
Mr. Board President, you have a quorum present this evening.
Thank you.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted January 17th, 2020 at all schools, The Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Thank you very much. Now we can move on to approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve the public board of education minutes November 20th, 2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Tufan, second. Any discussion? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Recusals?
Take your part. Mr. Chirillo.
Mr. Recuse.
Recuse, right. Abstentions? Okay. Need a motion to, uh, for the closed session meeting, November 20th, 2019.
So moved.
So moved. Mr. DeMeo.
I'll second.
Second, Mrs. Koloponowicz. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes. No.
Ms. Arminio?
Yep.
Okay. Any abstentions or recusals?
I recuse myself.
Okay. Mr. Chirillo, who recuses? Need a motion to approve the public board of education meeting, December 18th, 2019.
So moved.
Mrs. Koloponowicz, I need a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. DeMeo. Any discussion?
I think I have to recuse myself, right?
When I get to it. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Abstentions? Recusals? Mr. Nikotinsky.
I recuse myself.
And Mr. Chirillo, I'm sorry. A motion for the closed session meeting, December 18th, 2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Rutzke, seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Arminio, anyone else? Okay. Any abstentions? Recusal?
Recuse.
Mr. Chirillo, recusal. Okay. Now we can move on to our student board members' report. Hi. Katie, ready?
Yep. Okay. So tomorrow, January 23rd, will be eighth grade orientation night at the high school. The high school's wind ensemble will be performing. Some clubs will also be there as a form of club rush to gain students' interest and get them excited for what high school has to offer. For the rest of January and February, the middle school's sixth graders are putting on an Egyptian artifact exhibit. They each made projects that represent something important about the ancient Egyptian time period. Yesterday, during all lunch blocks, there was an elective rush. Students in their elective classes were selected to endorse their class. Other students were allowed to go and ask the student representatives about each class. On the 16th and 17th, the MTHS Drama Club held a murder mystery dinner. It featured 10 students and an interactive mystery about a wedding gone wrong.
Thank you, Kelly. You did great. Appreciate it. Okay. Now we're ready for our presentations. Dr. Alvik.
Okay. New Jersey School Boards Association recognizes that January is School Board Recognition Month in New Jersey. So each board member has a certificate in front of them on their table. And I'd like to read a resolution for, um, to recognize. So whereas the New Jersey School Boards Association has declared January 2020 to be School Board Recognition Month, a time when all residents can acknowledge the contributions made by our local school board members, and whereas the Monroe Township Board of Education is one of 580 local school boards in New Jersey, which sets policies and oversees operations for public school districts, and whereas the Monroe Township Board of Education embraces the goal of high-quality education for all New Jersey public school students, and whereas New Jersey's 5,000 local school board members who receive no remuneration for their services act as advocates for public school students as they work with administrators, teachers, and parents for the betterment of public education, and whereas school boards strive to provide the resources necessary to meet the needs of all students, including those with special needs, and whereas boards of education provide accountability to the public, they communicate the needs of the, of the school district to the public, and they convey to school administrators the public's expectations for the schools, and whereas New Jersey can take pride in its schools, which rank among the nation's best in key achievement indicators such as the National Assessment of Educational Progress Scores and the Preparation for College through Advanced Placement Offerings and SAT Assessments, now therefore be it resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education does hereby recognize the services of local school board members throughout New Jersey as we join communities statewide in observing January 2020 as School Board Recognition Month, and be it further resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education urges all New Jersey citizens to work with their local boards of education and public school staffs toward the advancement of our children's education. So, thank you to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Tufan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't think so. Okay. Any discussion? Comments? I'd like to just make a fast comment. I'd like to thank you, Dr. Alvik and the administrative team for this, and I want to say to my colleagues on the school board, we all see how difficult a task this is. We all volunteer for it. We all take it seriously. And I think all of us are giving 150%. And as, as president, I appreciate it, and it's a thrill to work with every one of you. Okay. Let's, I think we can move on. All right. We have the MTEA pride presentation.
So for tonight's MTEA pride presentation, we have Karen Bareski, Nuon Park, and Diana Kaiser. They're here tonight. They're going to present on our ESL Parent Night. On December 11th, our ESL department hosted our second annual ESL Parent Night. We hosted almost 50 adults and over 20 children for this event. During this event, ESL students participated in library activities while adults, or literacy activities, while adults provided information about literacy. In addition, we had a book giveaway for all students in attendance, and the Monroe Township Public Library had one of their members to highlight resources for ESL students and register and provide library cards on the spot. So.
Good evening. We'd like to take this opportunity to thank the MTEA for funding our annual ESL Family Literacy Night. We are so grateful to all of the families who came out to participate in this outstanding event. The ESL students wanted to share their thoughts with you, but a lot could not come today. So we compiled a short video to showcase their experiences, plus I have some of my friends here for moral support. We hope you enjoy it, and we thank you again for all that you do to help make our ESL programs so successful. We'd also like to thank the MTBOE for having us here tonight, and the high school video production team for assisting us with our video production.
I went to ESL night, and I liked the food and activities. Like, we were reading stories and we were writing funny stories.
I went to ESL literary night, and, um, once, and three things I liked about it was the pizza, and we got to pick books, and we got to, like, play computers and hear stories on the computers.
I got, I'm welcome. The story, no matter how you start your day, and what it, what you get when you play.
My favorite, um, part was when we go in the back room because we, there was, like, a computer, I think, and then we got to play a game, and I made my own monster.
I got this book called Walt Disney. It, um, it told me who was born first, what they did in Disney, um, his first cartoon.
I also got this book called Be Kind. I like this book because it shows how to be kind and have good manners.
Hi, my name is Mahas.
Hi, Mahas. What grade are you in?
First.
What school do you go to?
Oaktree.
What languages do you speak?
English and Dabu.
Cool. Did you and your family go to ESL literacy night?
Yes.
What did you do there?
Hmm, I ate pizza.
Did you eat anything else?
Gummies.
Very nice. Did you get to shop for books?
Yes.
What kind of book did you choose?
The card book.
And did you, did you read the book yet?
Yes.
And what was your favorite part of the book?
He gave all the cards away to the children.
Nice. Did you enjoy yourself at ESL literacy night?
Yes.
What was your favorite part of the night?
Hmm, getting you, getting the books.
Very nice. Thank you so much, Mahas.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Harsh. I'm in third grade in Oaktree Elementary School.
Hi, Harsh. Did you go to ESL Family Literacy Night?
Yes, I did.
And what did you do there?
I learned about ESL, like, I did some crafts, and got some books.
You got to choose books. What books did you choose?
Who Wants! Books and Dogman.
Very nice. And what was your favorite part of ESL literacy night?
When we got books.
Very cool. Thank you so much for coming. It was great seeing you and your family there.
You're welcome.
Bye.
Bye.
My name is Anna Marie Serbiere, and I am in sixth grade at Monroe Middle School. I enjoyed ESL literacy night because I worked on some fun reading activities with my sisters, and also I was available to see Ms. Bareski and Ms. Park after school. The book I picked out was Helen Keller. My favorite part is when Helen finally learned to respect her teacher, and...
Why did you like that part the best?
Because when she respects her teacher, she'll learn more.
Good.
One prediction that I have for the story is that when Helen gets older, she will not need any help, and she'll, like, finally maybe go to school and get, go to college. Um, I loved ESL literacy night because I also got the Polar Express book that I, I wanted so badly. Thank you, MTEA and Monroe.
Hi, my name is Helen. Uh, my school is Millah Lake. My grade is third grade, and, um, um, this is the book, what I call from ESL night.
What's the title?
The word called after.
Okay.
It's about a boy named Jeremy, and when he, well, he was happy with his word when he was, he heard every time, every day, and last at night, he, he opened his bag and let all his words and fly away. He was sad, but he thought Charlie catching up.
Wow. What else did you do?
My favorite part was getting free books and doing ABCR.
Oh, very good. Thank you so much, Emily.
We love ESL night.
Um, I speak Albanian in my house. I was not at the ESL literary night, but Ms. Park was nice enough to give me a book, and the book is called Be Kind. Um, I, next year, I wish I'm gonna go next year because I wanna get all the books.
I went to the parent night because I found very interesting to be there, and also to meet so many people from other countries and spend some time with them.
I went because my mother need to know new program.
I went to the parent night because it sound interested to me, and because I can have better resources, I can learn English.
I learned that there are many ways to have help when I speak English.
One thing I learned in ESL program is, uh, is other resources to have in the library.
I learned many ways to learn English and improve my future.
Reading helps me to learn English because I can practice new words and then find the meaning on, on Google.
Reading helps me by learning pronunciation of words.
Reading is helping me a lot because I've learned too many different words from another words, and also it's a nice time when you're reading.
My favorite part on, of the event is when they explain the function of the website.
My favorite part in ESL program is, um, is we have opportunity to, to choose books and apply for a library card.
My favorite part was when they gave us the information about the books.
I would want a similar event like the parent night because we can present to the people about how important is pollution, about pollution, and how important is to save the environment.
Maybe in the future, we can have another experience like this, and also we can have an international day that we can share our roots to another people, and they can, we can spend a really time together.
We're not done yet. We're not done yet. We had one high school student who came prepared to speak tonight, so I'd like to give her the opportunity to share her thoughts.
All right, so here is, here is Ty Caro Maria.
Use your mic, please. An essay that she wrote about a special author who inspires her.
Hi, my name is Eric Zai. I'm a freshman at this high school. It's my pleasure to tell you.
Can she speak a little closer to the mic? It's not taking around.
Malala Josephi caught international tension when she was shot, and everyone wondered what was going on. But she survived. After that, she decided to stand up and fight. She still fight for women's education rights because in her country, women are not noticed and are not equal to men. Malala may have turned out differently in her father practiced different parenting techniques because he was not strict, and he allowed to her to realize her dreams. Malala is a regular, yet powerful girl because outside of her house, she acts very serious. She's a very kind, good girl who speaks in public, but inside of her house, she acts like an everyday girl. She stand ups to her brothers and plays with them. Also, she teases them and gives them advice. To be brave means to overcome adversity and not be afraid to take chances. People overcome adversity by working very hard and being brave. Based on the passage Malala say, "And when I'm powerful, then I will go back to Pakistan." In my experience, I have overcome adversity when I, when I came to this country. I didn't know the language, and it was very difficult for me to go into school. I stayed home for almost two months. I'm still overcoming adversity because I'm trying to do better with my language every day. The ESL Parent Literacy Night was very important to me because it gave my mom chance to see my school. She meet my teacher, Ms. Kaiser, and I got to be with my friends. I also got to pick out a book. We listened to a really good presentation and different resources that are available at our school in the library to help us learn English. The best part was that I found with my friends. I hope we can do it again. Thank you.
Allow me to thank all of you for this presentation. You know, it's coming to this country and not knowing English and, and being given the opportunity to learn English as well as you do is just wonderful, and we thank the MTEA for not only this, but all the programs that they do to support our students in Monroe. And let's give everybody a big hand. And by the way, Bethan, you got me on the lobster. I want to know how I sign up to get that lobster she was, she mentioned over there. Yeah. Okay. Thank you all. Now we have committee reports. Any committees?
The ad hoc.
Oh, I'm sorry. The ad hoc, thank you. We have the ad hoc presentation first. Mr. Masters.
I'm here. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Yeah, this is the ad hoc committee report, not the...
Yes.
Okay, so.
I apologize.
No, that's no problem. I just thought you were moving stuff around, which is fine. Thank you, Mr. Ryback. Thank you for the board, thank you to the Board of Ed. Again, this should be the final report from the ad hoc and the actual recommendation, hopefully the final recommendation that the ad hoc will provide to the Board of Ed on growth. I just want to thank this Board of Ed for allowing this ad hoc committee. So it was a different kind of ad hoc committee where we went out to the public and solicited a lot more feedback and asked them to basically help us solve our issues. And I actually think that was a really great idea that the Board of Ed had at the time. I also wanted to thank the ad hoc committee for the amount of work. There's a lot of hours and a lot of nights that were put in, a lot of good collaboration, good discussion we had to come to this final recommendation, and I hope you think so, too. Okay. So, again, if you just, I hope all of you have seen the recommendation. I know some of you got it at the Buildings and Grounds meetings last week. It's functionally equivalent to what was distributed today. I think I removed the draft watermark, and, and I fixed a typographical error in the footnote. But again, it is basically functionally the same. And if you indulge me for a minute or two, I'm not going to take too much of your time. I'd like to just go over the process again for the last time of how we did this and how we got to this point. So this, again, like I was saying before, this committee did start a little different. We didn't get together and have a, some preconceived notions. What we did was we put out an RFP, Request for Proposal, to the public and asked them to help us come up with ideas or any kind of solutions that they think would address the growth problem that we have in this district. The members were selected from a diverse group. It was basically a nice cross-section stratification of the town. It was a little bit of everyone, so we got input from all the different areas in the, in the community. Now, the first thing we did was we identified the issue. We took the demographers report that we had. We did ask for another one. I think it's still pending. And we came up with a target of trying to address 3,000 unhoused students over the next several years. So with that target, we then applied that to the proposals we got and how they would satisfy the issues that we're having with growth. So, again, I'm going to reference the document a little bit that was handed out, or that was sent electronically, because we're green. We did come up with 34 proposals were submitted. We, the first thing the committee did was we applied five, a basic five requirement rubric, and they were, was it illegal? Was it not illegal? We couldn't take anything that was illegal or something we shouldn't be doing? Was it unethical? Did it negatively impact providing a thorough, efficient education? Was it under the board's purview? That was a big one. A lot of the ones we got were something the Board of Ed could not even do, things to do with the state, addressing stuff at the state level, again, not directly under the board's purview. And did it actually address the growth issue? We got a couple in there that had, really had nothing to do with the growth issue. Good ideas, we did forward them across, but again, nothing to do with the mandate of what the committee was there for. So that reduced the count by 19, so we had 15 proposals that didn't make it past the first triage phase that we said. And then the board, or the board, then the committee took a deeper dive. We came up with five, I'm sorry, four additional requirements that we wanted to incorporate. This is on page two. Again, we talked about adding the current high school, adding on to the current high school being more expensive than adding on to some of the other schools because of the types of classrooms we'd be talking about. Moving to ninth grade would have a significant cost savings, but would impact the middle school, so we had to talk about what the impact of the middle school would be. Building an intermediary school would net us the largest increase in seats, so when we talk about five, six, the target there was 1,400 students. Or if we talk five, six, seven, which isn't in the proposal anymore, that was a 2,100 number. However, again, we had to keep in mind that we were trying to hit that 3,000 student target. And a centralized earlier grade school, and that's very general, would be the most cost-efficient, again, because you're basically building regular, I don't know, plain vanilla classrooms. You don't have to build science classrooms or anything specialized. Now, you can't go all the way down. I know we discussed this at Buildings and Grounds, because if you go down too small, then you have to actually put restrooms into the classrooms, and they get prohibitively more expensive again. So with that, the ad hoc committee came up with three proposals, and I know this was in the packet, mostly around building an intermediary school, and that was either a five, six, or a five, six, seven. And again, this is page two, three, and four of the proposal. Now, if you remember, the initial plans, all but one had moving the high school ninth grade back into the middle school, and then moving some of the grades around at the earlier. Those were actually in Plan A and Plan D. And then if you go to Plan E, Plan E was the one that had maintaining the ninth grade and then manipulating, creating an intermediary school and manipulating at the lower levels. So what we did after that was we got some really good feedback from some board members. I know Mr. Pelori wanted to have a public feedback session on November 13th. We did. We went out to the public, had them provide their feedback on all the plans, took all the information we had back, had another meeting, and then basically came up with the recommendation based on the public feedback. Now that is on page four, and I'm at the end, so. Basically, what the ad hoc committee is recommending, now there is a foot, there is a footnote on there, I want to make sure, because we are waiting for the new demographers report, and that could change this, but we're hoping that, well, we're hoping it changes it down, but if the demography report does not change it, the ad hoc committee has recommended the construction of a five, six, two-grade school, intermediary school, and then a partial permanent classroom space to be added to the high school. Now, we had a lot of discussion about the second one, the partial permanent classroom space. The committee knew about the trailers, so this was more of trailers being short-term, you know, three or five years. I don't know if the board has decided that yet, but what we wanted to was wanted to put something on the back of the school, or whatever. That was a more long-term investment in construction. Okay? So it was in addition to the trailers. It wasn't a replacement. And that was pretty much it. I will take any questions, but I know most of you have heard this over and over again, or...
Any board members have questions for Mr. Masters?
Did the committee explore permanent modular construction?
So the committee discussed it at the July meeting and the August meeting. We asked Jerry Teig. He reached out to one modular construction company who came back and declined to work with us.
Do you have, do you have the name of that company?
He has the actual name of the company. And I think it might even, I think it's in the meeting minutes on the website. So past that, what we decided to do was, since it was out of the scope of this committee to define construction standards or tell the board how to, how to build buildings, what the committee said was, it's, again, this is all defined in the meeting minutes, we should look into alternative construction like modular, like all this other stuff because it'll reduce costs. But again, it's not in the purview of the committee to tell this board how to construct a building. I mean, you don't even have an educational spec yet, so we wouldn't even be able to know what, how many classrooms, what we wanted to decide upon. And it would cost a significant amount of money to start pushing that forward, which we didn't have. So yes, sorry. Long drawn out, but yes.
Mr. Chirillo.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I just want to start by thanking the ad hoc committee. I know you guys did a lot of work, and I know that that's not always easy. I also think that the, the public forum that, that was had here, I thought that that was very productive, and I heard a lot of members of the public bringing up ideas, and then I was happy to see that a lot of those ideas were then incorporated into the final report, which I thought was, was a good thing. The one thing that I, because I know Dr. Alvik brought it up at our, at the Buildings and Grounds meeting, that I think is important, is that I think it could be confusing for the public to see that we, well, we had a middle school referendum, and now we don't need a middle school, but that the five, six actually takes the pressure away from the middle school, so we no longer would need a middle school, and I think that's important to explain to, to the public so that they understand what we're doing.
Sure, absolutely.
So, when...
So, when we went and looked at the numbers and the ad hoc committee really started from scratch and really looked at all of the proposals that came from the community, and after getting feedback after the two failed referendum, where one of the, a lot of the feedback was, we don't want a second middle school. That's why they looked at the five, six building, because a five, six building would essentially remove the sixth grade out of the middle school, which would alleviate, alleviate pressure there by about 600 to 700 students. But it would also take fifth grade out of the elementary schools, which would open up 600 seats across the elementary schools. So, so by doing this building, you're really kind of alleviating, alleviating two areas of, of growth for quite a while to come, and then we still would have to address the high school, which is where the second piece of the ad hoc's recommendation came from.
Thank you.
Any other question? Mr. Polari?
Thank you, Mr. President. To the ad hoc committee, thank you very, very much. I know how difficult and how much you're distracted with social media and everything else, and you stayed your course and did your job. I really commend you for doing that. Louie, in your summary, you mentioned about 40,000 students for the grade five and grade six and not necessarily the high school. Did the ad hoc committee look at how many number of students that needed to be accommodated as a part of the expansion to the high school that you proposed?
I believe we did. We, we generalized it. I know Dr. Alvik was going to get the final numbers once he goes through it. We weren't to that point yet. We just knew that, I know we talked to the high school principal. The numbers were, I don't even remember the numbers, were in the 1,200 range, if I remember right.
I, I think so. I don't know them off the top of my head, and it may change. I know we're waiting for the, the new updated demographers report.
I'm only looking for algorithmic to kind of have an idea yet.
Yeah, so we're waiting to see. But remember, when we went out for the last referendum, it was for 1,000 students in addition to the high school.
Any other Board member? Ms. Arminio?
Thank you, Mr. Masters, and I, too, commend the, the public participation more than anything and the, the public interest in this, because it's been really 20 years that we have been going through our growth, and every year seems to be a different crisis, so, or so we're told. But I, I think that the public's interest and the ad hoc committee has served the community well. Now, it's up to the Board, of course, and recommendations from our administrators and a little further research to find out what is the best idea and, and the way to move forward. I think all the ideas are good, but we have to try to do our best practices. But, Mr. Masters, may I ask you the date of the last demographers report that you had to work with?
I knew you were going to ask me that. I do have it somewhere.
I'm so happy that...
I knew you were going to ask that. Let me, I'll, I'll find it in my, I'm not going to sit here and shuffle, I'm not even going to tell you.
Right, because I'm a little disappointed that the ad hoc committee, as well as the Board, has not yet received, I think it's been months since we've paid for and sent a resolution out for the demographers report. And again, all of our ideas and even ideas coming from the Board are worthwhile until, until two things happen. One, we find out what our numbers really are, and two, we find out about the cost of, of these ideas. Every idea is a great idea. We have to be practical, and we have to keep in mind that we have two failed referendums, we have a public to respect their positions, and so I'm hoping, yeah, it's a little disappointing that the recommendations come without detailed information, meaning the demographic report and then the cost of some of these ideas.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes, sir.
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that the demographers report is due this month.
Yeah, he is telling us January, we're, we're hopefully soon.
I know, but it sort of put the ad hoc committee in a, in a difficult position because they're, they're working with no numbers at all. I mean, we have to work with something concrete, but I, you know...
I agree, that's why there's a footnote on my one recommendation.
Okay. It's going to be diff, my point is, it's going to be difficult to make concrete decisions without concrete information. But you did a great job.
Any other Board member while Mr. Masters was looking? Mr. Mayo?
I just, I just wanted to thank Lou and the, and the ad hoc committee. I think they did a really good job. I read their proposal today, and I think the workflow was excellent, and I think the proposal is a great proposal. I mean, I think it's, it's, it would really do well by our students, so I'm pleased with that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just a clarification, Dr. Alvik, I believe although the, the projection numbers are not exactly with us yet, have you, has the administration seen at least the draft numbers to see how different they are from what was done previously?
Yes, but it's not a final draft. He was waiting on a few more numbers before he got to us. So I really can't compare them because we don't have it to compare to the old one. I want to make sure until he has all the numbers in there, it doesn't make sense to compare it before that.
Anyone else?
One more question.
Sure.
On the minutes for August 22nd, number five says...
Get closer to the mic, please.
It says, Mr. Teig is trying to contact the modular construction vendor submitted in the proposal but has no response. I know we have two companies that we've been working for, working with for years with trailers, and they do modular construction, which is Ares and Mobile Lease, which is on the agenda today. So I'm just a little confused that he had no response, but they're vendors of the district.
That was what we were told, there was no response. But I think it was specific to a modular discussion, though.
Yeah, can I, that was because we had received, through our proposals, I think, we had received a proposal, or it wasn't really a proposal because it didn't give numbers or anything, from a company, and that's the company that he had originally reached out to because it was the, that's what the committee had asked him to do. And that was the company that he didn't receive a response from.
Okay.
Ms. Arminio?
Yeah, on that point, I, I'm, that's confusing to me, because if the ad hoc committee asked for it, and they, I know they asked for other things and they were given it, that, to me, is a very significant piece of information. We've had the public actually doing their own research, public coming to us with information, the ad hoc committee, and of course, we're supposed to, the Board is supposed to rely on recommendations from our administrators, but if, if we actually had the information in-house with vendors that we have had a history with and that we have used, but we couldn't ask an additional question, I mean, I've, I've been for a long time, before I've even gotten on the Board, talked about, you know, Plan B, Plan C. That would have been an easy question for, I believe, for us to get the information for. So there, there's something uncomfortable for me that the vendor that we have used historically, who has information, who has even the materials to satisfy just even the question, it, it wasn't, it wasn't asked. I mean, I, there's a, there's a disconnect somewhere in that. I mean, the modulators might be a very, very viable and reasonable situation. And I know there may be a difference between the trailers, which goes under the operational budget, and maybe a need, if we have to have the permanent modulators, we might have to do a referendum. But a, a smaller referendum might work, and modulators have a life expectancy far greater than, and this is what research has provided, you know, outside research, a far greater than trailers, and then we own them, and they're not really that bad. So again, it's not so much about not being, not being for trailers, but it's also that we, we, we need to research, and we, if we're going to make decisions, in my opinion, we need to have enough of, of the information and enough options to make our decisions properly.
Mr. Chair? Chiro. One sec.
Mr. Chair, just a couple of points. The ad hoc committee did use enrollment projections in their deliberations. It wasn't a report based on the ASSA as of October 15th, 2019, which is still being calculated and finalized, as Dr. Alvik said, but they did have a fresh report that was within a year or two. I think it was only about a year out. And the projections based off that are reliable for what the, the purpose of the committee was, which was to determine what the needs are for the district, not how to construct them. The how to construct the part that Mrs. Arminio is referring to is yet to come. The ad hoc committee has made a determination that the committee unanimously, without one dissenting opinion, recommended a five, six intermediate school and a conservative addition to the high school. The five, six school is going to be a state model that was recommended, and the, the addition to the high school is not going to satisfy all of the unhoused students, but some of them.
Right.
It's going to be a more conservative project. Both are going to be based upon the state model. The how it's to be constructed is yet to come. That step happens when it comes to administration, schematics are performed, and modulators are not in any way, shape, or form unattractive to administration at this point, especially for the addition to the high school. That will be looked at. So I just want to make that clear, that has not been overlooked. The modular component is still very much alive, and, and we're enthused to look at it. And Mr. Teig did solicit quotes for the committee's purpose for a vendor that was recommended at the time, and the person did not provide a quote. So, you know, he did the best he could as deliberating with the committee, but even that concept of determining, you know, what is the price of a modular component is beyond the scope of what that committee was there to do.
Let me say, personally, I, I have all the confidence in the world and this administration, their experience and their dedication to do the kind of job this community needs, this school and this district needs, to get us the best result that we possibly could afford for our students, and we have to do this as soon as possible. So thank you, thank you, Ms. Arminio. Mr. Polari?
I think Ms. Arminio wants to say something.
Oh.
No, go right ahead, I'm still...
All right. The first and foremost is that I think we need to understand the context of the presentation that's being made. I think this Board has made a decision to appoint an ad hoc committee to come and make a suggestion of a qualitative scenario that would help the district. I think that's exactly what's being done at this point. In terms of the cost estimating, it's like calling up a car dealer and saying, can you give me a quote on a car? What is he going to give you a quote on the car for? What car do you want? Do you want two-door, four-door, moon roof, automatic transmission? I think we're missing some of that information. I don't think that's the task of the ad hoc committee to come up with that. So I think for today, we're taking the idea, the plan, or the scenario that they're going to suggest, and then get into the next more of it. I also want to share, I have been in the construction business, the design of the construction business for the last 34 years. People seem to use the word modular very frequently when it comes to construction, and I just want to shed some, some light on that. To me, a building built of concrete, brick and mortar is, could be a modular construction. A pop-up tent that you put when you go for camping is also a modular construction. So when you say, how much would a thousand square foot, obviously, I'm giving extreme examples here, but when you ask somebody to give a thousand square foot cost estimate for modular construction, what is it going to give you? So the point is, you need to have some specifications, the size of it, the material, the type of equipment that goes into it. I don't think the ad hoc committee is at that point right now.
No. Anybody else? Mr. Masters, I, I know we have a reso to, to read, Mr. Tufano, but before we do, if you don't mind, I just want to thank you and everyone on that ad hoc committee. They all worked so admirably together. It was very, everyone took their job seriously, and, you know, there was a respect that was there, not only for the task at hand, but for each other. And differences of opinion were dealt with really in a very professional way. That being said, it's kind of ironic that I have to do this now, but the job of the, of the committee is over, and so I am dissolving the ad hoc committee. But with that being said, Mr. Tufano, I think you have a resolution to read.
Can we give him a round of applause for the...
Sure.
And again, just again, it was the committee. It's easy being a chairman when you got a great committee like I did, so again, thanks to them. Thank you, too.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to, one, acknowledge receipt of the recommendations of the ad hoc committee as follows. A, to construct a grade five and grade six intermediate school using the state model on the Board's property, property located at 254 Apple Goth Road, Monroe Township, New Jersey. And more particularly, described as lots 14.01 and 16 in block 25 of the official tax map of Monroe Township. B, to construct a small classroom addition to the high school, which partially addresses the number of unhoused students constructed in a fiscally conservative manner. Two, authorize in direct district administration to engage in a limited design study for a potential referendum project, subject to further deliberations and recommendations by the Building and Grounds Transportation Committee. And the Finance Committee, and ultimately, for deliberation and consideration by full Board, the Board President, the Superintendent of Schools, and the Business Administrative Board Secretary are hereby authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to implement this action of the Board of Education.
Thank you. Second. So move Mr. Mayo, second, Mr. Chiro. Any discussion, questions? Ms. Arminio?
Yeah, so, there's a difference to me between accepting the report and then authorizing the district administrator to engage in a design study for the potential referendum project. So what this, what number two is saying to me is that we are accepting the report and moving forward on that very report to do this design. So we're going to start to spend money on exactly this when Mr. Polari so aptly said that it was just...
Concept.
Just a concept. So I, I, I think it's premature to authorize us to do a limited design study, again, without details of either further options or specifically pricing and the kind of construction we're going to go to. So again, we're, we're spending funds that are determined by the ad hoc committee without any real, concrete information. So I thought, look, I'm happy to, and I, and I appreciate the recommendation, I'm happy to, again, still review that a little bit more in-depth with our administration, but to say that we're immediately taking it and, and moving right forward with designs and, again, spending more money, I have a problem with that. We have a history here of spending money for design things and for, to, to review. I mean, what comes to mind is the 65 acres off of what, England Road Church Lane?
Yeah.
And we spent, you know, tens of thousands of dollars, and then...
It's not good.
It, it didn't work. So I, I don't know if, if I can ask Mr. Tufano to amend, amend number two, and so we can just have an acceptance of the report and then move farther as a Board.
I'd like to ask Mr. Gorski to respond to some of your concerns.
That's fine.
But before I do, Mr. Gorski, with that 65 acres, I know when we were discussing it, if we didn't spend the money, we wouldn't have known that it wasn't acceptable.
Well, we'll have, we, we can have an argument about that, because the township should have known, and they should have given us that information, so...
But it didn't come from the...
My point is, we do spend the money, go, you know, on these things, and then it, it doesn't really pan out. And again, if it's just a recommendation, so, so I, so I, I don't know if I need to make a motion to ask Mr. Tufano to amend it, and we...
Well, I want to suggest, Mr. Gorski, answer your question.
If I may comment on it, this resolution was deliberated at length with the Building Grounds Transportation Committee, not once, but at two particular meetings, and this is the recommendation of the committee. And as we discussed before, this takes the product of the ad hoc committee, the democratic process and all the deliberative work that they put into it, which is the recommendation of a five, six school to be constructed on the golf course, using the state model and a conservative addition to the high school, exploring fiscally conservative methods of construction, which is a very broad concept, and that's what the committee was charged with, come up with a broad concept to solve the issue of the unhoused students. Mr. Masters has provided that tonight. The next step, as this has always been in this district, is it comes to administration, once the Board accepts the, the report of the committee, to bring this more into focus, to do a feasibility study, using professionals to a limited extent, to determine if it's viable or not, or if it needs to be changed along the way to make more sense. Then that proposal goes back to the committees, as Mr. Tufano incorporated in the resolution, Building Grounds Transportation Committee, once again, at least a few more times, and the Finance Committee, and then ultimately, the full Board's going to deliberate on this.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I, if I may suggest, I think Michelle was asking me, what do you think, Andy? I, I think, Michelle, it needs to be understood what we're trying to do here.
Right.
A concept was given qualitatively by the ad hoc committee. The next step is to take the qualitative idea and put some numbers and some flush on that bone, if you will. Probably that's, that's a bad term.
That's not the right term.
I'm sorry about that. So, basically, what it does is, it actually does a feasibility study to say what they're suggesting is feasible, and we can, you can construct this for a certain amount of cost at a certain location, and it's feasible. Only after it's feasible, we can invest into actual design. So those are the progressive steps. I do understand your concern, that when you say limited design study, automatically people think you're going to the drawing board and you're drawing up what the facility should look like. I don't think that's the intent here. The intent is for them to look at the feasibility of this and come up with the cost to give us a better idea, to see if this is feasible, if it works, or do we need to tweak it. Am I correct in my assessment?
Yes. The board's familiar with schematic design. It looks like a framework of a school, identifies the number of classrooms needed. That's to be engaged in as part of this limited design study with the architect. Also included in that is the.
Let's call it feasible study, please. Feasibility study.
Yes. The construction of schematic design using the architect. There will also be some work with the demographer to, once we get the final report. That's all part of these costs, and it is a limited design. We're not doing blueprints now, we're not taking this to that degree. This is now going to become more in focus with broad schematic designs. And a schematic design, for those who know, is far, far different than the detail that comes in a blueprint. The blueprint will come later on through the deliberations to come from Building Grounds Transportation, Finance Committee, and the full board. But this now just puts a picture on this conceptual idea, so that you can better visualize it.
Yes.
So.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My question is, so, we are only going with one idea? Is that it? This is the only option? This is, there's no other options? And, again, I know we had the ad hoc committee to bring us this, and I respect that and take it, but that's the sole option we have to move forward? That's really my question. There's no other input that can be taken from the board?
Next, again, and I don't mean to be redundant, but it will come to administration.
Yes.
Administration will study this idea and see if this pans out, or if it needs to be modified in any way, if any part of it's flawed. And then what we will do is work with the limited professional engagements here, and then bring it back to the board through the committee process next.
This is a recommendation.
Yeah, I just want to correct something. I have, I have no doubt that it is a not, it's not flawed. There was nothing flawed about the idea. My point is, that over twenty years, we've only presented to the public and to, and the board, one option, one idea, and it, we stuck to it whether, whether it was a best practice or not. So my question is, is this all we have to offer?
Well, let me just say, because I think it's important, when the ad hoc committee started, they asked for ideas from the entire community.
Right.
And I forgot what he said, twenty-eight?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. Thirty-four came in, they certainly deliberated over them, and they, and they got it down to what they presented today. So, it wasn't just a haphazard thing. It was something that was done through different, they did receive different suggestions.
And, again, not haphazard, not flawed, just the only option. That's all I'm asking.
I think it's important, it's the final option. It definitely wasn't the only option.
It's a final option?
It's the only option.
All right, actually, that answers the question better.
Can I, can I ask, I just don't want to cross.
I'm sorry.
I will be happy to recognize you if you just raise your hand.
The other piece, too, is, when the committee came up, the committee actually came up with five options. They then went out to the community for a public evening, who gave feedback on those options. They went back to the drawing board, looked at the feedback, and came down, and this is what they came up with. Based on those five options, which actually, by the time it went to the, went to the community, it was actually three, A, D, and E. We got rid of B and C. And based on that feedback that we got from the community then, that's why they came down to the one option from the committee.
Any other discussion?
I just want to clarify, I know Jill wants to go, but it relates to what Michelle's saying, is that, yes, this is the final option, but this is not set in stone. In other words, based on what comes up from the feasibility study, we may have to tweak this. So that is still an option for us. Is that, you know, it may not be feasible, it may be feasible, some parts of it is feasible. Am I correct in that?
Well, you have, if we approve this, it goes to the administration, and that's where that comes in.
And I know.
And that's where we have to depend on their expertise, what I referred to before.
And one, I know one of the questions that you just brought up, Ms. Arminio, is that, you know, we want costs. That's part of this process. We can't get costs until we have this limited study done, and then we can get an idea of costs. And there we can look at, do we do the brick and mortar? I know that was a word, term we used during Buildings and Grounds the last couple of weeks, brick and mortar, or do we look at modulators? How do we, how do we construct it? So there will be more options to come on this, but in order for us to even start looking at this, we have to start, we have to start looking at it. And we can't do that unless the board directs us to do that.
Mr. Chiarelli, I see your hand coming out.
I think Jill.
Oh, Mr. Mayo, I'm sorry. I need to see your hand.
That's okay. I'm patient. I just feel the ad hoc committee put a lot of effort into this. They really did do their due diligence. I've read the proposal, they've worked through what I thought was every option. I think we have to respect their work. In addition, I hear from the public over the last couple of meetings, that they don't want to slow this process down. They actually want us to move this process as quick as possible. So, I think delaying this would not be in the best interests of the children of this district.
Hi, Mr. Chiarelli.
One of the things that we talked about in Buildings and Grounds was the fact that this is a recommendation, that we're just accepting the recommendation from the committee, it's non-binding. And in order for it to become binding, that's going to take a collaborative effort, you know, with all the board members, the administration, and then, and Buildings and Grounds, and all of those things. So, because I think one of the things, and for those of you who weren't there, one of the things that we talked about was, you know, when we create a plan, we have to make sure that this, not only is this plan going to satisfy our needs, but that it's also going to be palatable to the public. We need this to pass. And so, the plan that we make has to encompass all of those things, and that's going to take a lot of collaboration and effort. It's going to take the demographic study and the incorporation of all those things, and then, and then the distillation of it, so that our final product is something that we can go back with confidence, not only to the full board, but then to the public, and hopefully get it approved.
This is a necessary step to get the kind of end result that we all need. So, thank you.
You said it in fewer words.
Anyone else?
Again, I just like clarification. Mr. Rutske suggested that it's a final and only option. Mr. Chiarella said that it is.
Non-binding.
Non-binding.
No.
It's confusing to me. And, and, and Dr. Alvik said that the only way to get information is to move this far. And my, my preference would be if we had two options and did a comparison. I mean, yes, the ad hoc committee did a lot of work, and I think if we had a second option or, you know, we, a comparison, because all we're going to get with this one option, it's just going to get pushed forward, in my experience. It's just going to, it's just going to get pushed forward, because we're just going to keep adding to it and adding to it. And, yes, I've been an advocate for getting this stuff done two years ago. So it's not that I'm trying to delay anything, and I know it's all about the children, but making, making the right decisions and getting a referendum passed is the ultimate thing. And if we get this referendum passed, and it's not going to satisfy our enrollment needs, then we have to go out to the public again. So, again, since, I just, I just always thought that we should have a Plan B. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Polori.
Back in April, May, this ad hoc committee was tasked to come up with a concept that the Board of Education could use to get the support of the community, so that we can get something passed as a referendum. Because as we all know, space is at a premium, and we need to do that. What happens within any ad hoc committee is they come with their final report, which is what they're giving us. With any report that we get from the ad hoc committee, or any ad hoc committee, it's non-binding. It's a final report from the ad hoc committee, it is non-binding. You could take the concepts from an ad hoc committee, you could take it in total, you could take it in part, or you could dismiss it. It's not the job of the Board of Education to do that. It's the job of now taking that final concept, non-binding, give it to the people who are the experts in doing that, which is our administrators, and have them come up with a plan that we could support. They could come up with maybe two different versions of a plan, give it to the different committees, and then the committees can discuss it. There's a lot of ways this can still go, but right now, we're just, we're just approving the concept from the ad hoc committee and giving our administration, whom we should trust to do the job of coming back to the board with a plan, that opportunity to do that in a limited version.
And I think that's what a few of us have been saying here, and I think this is really a pathway, if you think of it that way. It's putting us on the path to get to where we need, to need to go. Any other discussion?
One more question.
Yeah, sure, Mr. Nikotinsky.
The location of the property, I thought it was unsafe because of the trucks.
I'm sorry.
I thought it was unsafe because of the trucks. So we're going to add school buses on that area, too, now.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Previously, when the, the board put a bond referendum to the community for the construction of a middle school on that property, a traffic study was performed, and we were comfortable at that time that it was not unsafe because of, I believe you said, trucks. Certainly, part of the deliberations yet to be performed on this, if it gets that far, is, is another traffic study. That's paramount importance.
Can I interrupt for a minute? We're talking about two different things here. The ad hoc committee is talking about the high school property. We're not talking about the golf course.
It's on the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's on the recommendation.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, another traffic study will be forthcoming, but that's once this really comes much more into focus. You don't know, you don't know the size of this school yet, so you don't know how much traffic it's going to bring, for example. That, that yet has to be determined.
Steve, may I call the question, please? I think we've spent enough time on this.
Absolutely. Okay. We can have a vote, a roll call vote.
I had a request of Mr. Tufano, he didn't answer me. I asked him if he would amend number two. So if he doesn't want to, that's fine, but I think that's on the table.
Well, we've had a called question.
Yeah, but.
And we have to take a vote.
I think that's wrong, by Robert's rules, but, okay.
This is a vote on the resolution as recommended by the Building Grounds Transportation Committee, as moved by Mr. Tufano. Motion made by Mrs. De Mayo, seconded by Mr. Chiarella. And I'll summarize, to construct a grade five intermediate school using the state model on the board's property located at Applegarth Road, and to construct in addition to the high school in a fiscally conservative manner. The next step of this, as we've discussed at length, is for it to come to administration, to do a limited design study and a feasibility study, to see if, if it should proceed, and then go to the board's committees, and then the board. Okay. Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Polori?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio?
I vote no, as it is, as it is proposed.
Thank you. Mrs. Koleponimich?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mrs. Siegel?
Yes.
And Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Board President, motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, we can move on to committee reports. Again, I apologize for that snafu. I was a little confused. Okay. Good job. Any, I know Mr. Tufano's committee, anyone else? I think that's, you're on. Okay.
On January first, January twenty-first, two thousand twenty, the committee met. Our discussion was about the Eagle River Day Camp program expansion. The committee reviewed an email proposed dated December tenth, two thousand nineteen, at twelve oh six PM, from Mr. Marty Herman to Dr. Alvik and Mike Gorski detailing proposed lease rates for use of facilities at the former Eagle River Day Camp. The committee evaluated the profitability of the current ECE and before and after care basket programs, and determined that it is not fiscally sound to consider moving the programs at this time. The committee thanked Mr. Herman for his efforts and his proposal. This matter is now closed. Post-meeting discussion, the committee reviewed a draft resolution which included the recommendations from the ad hoc committee. The committee also engaged in discussion regarding the proposed lease of four classroom trailers for Monroe Township High School, and requested, and request that administration inquire with the proposed trailer contractor if the contract award could be tabled until February board meeting, and still make the September school opening for completion of four classroom trailers. The committee wishes to discuss further with the board the possibility of outright purchase of the four classrooms, and may direct the architect of record to investigate construction code requirements for permanently connecting the aforementioned trailers to the high school.
Can I have a motion to move that?
I don't think you.
We don't suggest.
I thought he was made, okay. I'd like to read something, because, Mr. Tufano, Mr. Tagg said he was going to contact the vendor, and we just got a reply, so I'd like to read that, because it certainly would impact whatever we're going to talk about. As requested by the BGNT committee last night, I contacted, Mrs., Mr. Tagg, I contacted Mobile Lees Modular and spoke with owner Murphy Barton. I informed Mr. Barton that MTBOE has a pending resolution for tonight's public meeting to award a five-year lease contract for four classroom trailers to Mobile Lees Modular, and that the board would like to explore an option for potential purchase of the trailers in lieu of the lease. Mr. Barton confirmed that he could get us pricing for a purchase of the proposed lease trailers, which are to be existing, previously used classroom trailers, as well as pricing for newly manufactured trailers. Furthermore, Mr. Barton indicated that he feels that he could have either a purchase or lease option completed by September one, two thousand twenty, if the board delayed award buyer resolution until the February public meeting, with two caveats. One, Mobile Lees will proceed to prepare AutoCAD drawings required for our submission to NJDOE, and project management, and project management planning for the project, with the understanding that the board reneg, that if the board renegs and does not proceed with either project with Mobile Lees, and that they will pursue compensation for aforementioned efforts. Two, Mobile Lees cannot commit to having a permanent connection to the building completed in time for school opening. This would have to be designed by an architect and possibly put out to bid and awarded to another independent contractor. The trailers owned or leased would be a distance away from the building, not physically connected with a corridor, but simply an exterior canopy over sidewalk. I will await further directions.
So, so, to be clear, you mentioned that we asked him to give us a proposal on trail, buying trailers. I think the discussion was to purchase some type of modular unit that would be permanently on the site, not trailers.
Well, at any rate, the earliest, and I think this is important, the earliest that he could do anything for us would be September first. Now, school starts September third.
So the problem lies with how the units are attached to the high school, basically?
Yes.
Okay, so, the trailers that he's giving us as a rental don't have to be attached to the high school?
No.
They will not be attached to the high school.
So the kids will walk out in the elements?
There will be a.
Forty feet away.
An overhang, but it has to be away from the building.
Would that be similar to what the middle school has at this time?
Yes, but it's not crossing the driveway, so there can be an overhang.
Okay.
So, I'm just curious, why, why wasn't this call made or email sent when the ad hoc committee asked for some kind of pricing or feasibility of what cost would be for permanent, as opposed to?
I can't, I can't answer that. I don't have the answer to that.
Because we were just told that he was snubbed by the.
Yes, I know. But, the BGNT committee asked for this.
Yeah, but we didn't get that answer until just right now, and I wish we would have had that during the meeting, but it was asked for at the meeting, so I understand that.
Yeah. Any questions for Mr. Tufano?
I also just want to say, I think, as we all discussed in the meeting, we absolutely, I think, should maybe explore a different company and see if they could give us some kind of cost analysis, and maybe reach out to an architect and see what his cost would be as far as attaching the units, because the cost of renting, it's very expensive. It's not a cheap, it's not a cheap thing we're doing by renting these trailers. So if we can buy something permanently that we own for a long period of time, for, even if it's double, but at least we own it, I think that's definitely something we all need to explore, and I don't need to be repetitive, but.
No, no, you're bringing up good points.
Public needs to hear that we discussed that in the BGNT as well.
What we talked about yesterday, you know, buying something is always great if you have the money to do it, and that's a real problem for us is having the money to do it. We have a lot of things coming down the pike. We have contract negotiations coming up, and we just don't have that much money to spend. And, you know, if you're going to buy something, you're going to lease, you've got to look at the quality of what you're getting. Certainly, you don't want to buy something that's going to fall apart on you in seven years.
So, again, not to be repetitive, but I think the public would agree that renting something for a year for $600,000 as opposed to buying something for 30 years for 1.2 million is definitely a better investment. So, we need to get those facts in order.
Thing is, we need that, we need these trailers in place for September. Dr. Alvich, I think, was pretty clear that there is no debating on this. September 3 is first day of school, and if we don't have those trailers in place, we have a problem in the high school. I know I heard Dr. Higgins say that, you know, he needs those trailers, and he can get by with them for a while, you know, and that's important for us to keep in mind, and when we can have it done so that they're ready for the first day of school. I don't know, Dr. Alvich, you have anything to add?
No, agreed. There's classes that need to be in those rooms. The other piece, I know you mentioned also to look at other companies. If we do that, we won't have them for September. This company is saying if we go with this, they'll give us another option if we wait until February, but they're going to do, they're going to, we have to get some work done in order to submit all of the paperwork in time to get it for September.
The other thing I want to make, let me just mention this, Ken, I'll get to you. The other thing I just wanted to mention was, you know, as a former teacher, I could tell you how important class size is. When, if we're delaying this and delaying this, and the kids are coming and coming, those class sizes are going to go up, and it's just extremely difficult and unfair situation to put our teachers who work so hard, we all admit, we all notice it, the results we're getting, but those results will start falling if we start seeing 40 kids in a classroom. We can't do that. Mr. Chiarella?
I think there are a couple of things that we really have to think about with regards to this. So, in my mind, and having the benefit of being on the board for the last 10 years and being chair of Buildings and Grounds and seeing how that operates, how the budgets operate, how the trailers operate in our needs, the thing that scares me, and I do agree, so I'll start with that, I do agree that when we look at a referendum and what we need, that we should be definitely looking at modular structures for the high school, at least for the high school, and be doing that. But, in the interim, we have a small window from now until September to get trailers in place in order to alleviate at least the steamhead, the bottleneck, you know, the problem that we have with on-house students. It's not going to take care of all of it, but it'll help. My fear, though, is if, we don't know what a modular structure will cost, right? So, if we spend, if it's $4 million, it might not be 1.2, it could be 2.2 or 4 million, we don't know. What does that do to our operating budget? So, then, now, we, as a board, we say, yeah, we want modular structures instead of the $600,000 rentals, but then the impact on the operating budget could be severe, because if it's 2 million or 4 million, that money has to come from somewhere, and that would, those will be cuts. Those will be cuts to programs, busing, and things like that. So, although I agree with the need to go with modular, I also know that we're under, we're in a situation right now where we need to have a fix in place for September, and I think that trailers would be our quickest and best option to get there. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody else? He said it beautifully. I was going to say it. He said it perfectly.
And just to the point, I agree with that as well. I wasn't really referring to the need for them for September. I'm speaking long-term, renting a lot, we need a lot of trailers. So, renting them all long-term, I don't think is going to be more fiscally responsible than actually buying something that's permanent. So, that's what I meant. I didn't mean in the immediate need.
I think, if I may, I think moving forward, if we're going to continue to procure trailers, I think we definitely should do that. Peter's recommendation, I agree with that, because I started looking at the square footage of a typical trailer versus a modular construction unit, and the square footage varied somewhere from $45 to $450 or even more than that. It all depends on the material specifications, everything you put in there. But, I think we need, I know the answer is somewhere in the middle. We're not going to go with the $450 square foot or $45 square footage. It's somewhere in the middle. I think we're planning on visiting Edison School District pretty soon when Dr. Alvich...
Monday.
Monday is confirmed, and then we'll get some ideas of what they're doing, how their product looks like, how it's going to hold up over time, and then I think we'll have a little bit more information to move forward with.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Tufano. Now, we can move on. I believe we have the public forum. When you come up to address the board, you have four...
Steve, you don't want me to report anything about the...
Oh, I didn't think you would. You didn't raise your hand. We're usually very emphatic.
I know. ADHOC committee hasn't met, but I don't mean to steal the thunder. I think it's a collective effort by everybody. Just checking with Kathy Kopalovic, we never had a, not never, we haven't had a sitting commissioner of Department of Education visit our district in a long, long time, if he ever did, and we had that opportunity yesterday. Thanks to the administration for putting together an excellent presentation, and I think, Steve, you're going to get a little bit more detail into it. The ask from us is that continue to talk to the legislators. They are the only people who can make a difference for us. Continue to make phone calls and, you know, help us get the point across to get some line items included into the budget as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Palori. Anyone else? All right, so, now we can move on to our public forum. Anyone that addresses the board, this is pertaining to the agenda. You have four minutes to speak. Please give your name and address. I feel, I know your name and address, but you have still have to give...
For the recorder, I have to say that, President. Prakash Parab, 33, Denard Drive. Again, as I start the meeting, again, looking at the enrollment, page four on the agenda, we have just recruited 123 students, all enter across the schools in last one year, and we have recruited, you know, enrolled more, sorry, not recruited, enrolled more additional students, 123 in last one year, across all the schools. In last four years, 431 students across all schools. So, still, I challenge how we can say that in next six years, we'll have additional 1,500 students. So, I'm looking forward for the demographics report and not coming and just saying, these are the numbers. Like to know, I request the Board of Education to ask the demographic where these numbers are coming up, popping up, from which division, construction divisions. So, I request BOE to do that. Now, coming to the second one on the trailers, we, the public, have been asked, requesting to look at modular construction, what the middle school in Edison has done, instead of trailers and saving money. And again, here we go, put a pressure, September is coming, pass this, this is, you are putting the board members on the pressure to vote, yes, this is not good. We requested, even I wrote a email requesting Mr. Teig to go and see, please go and see Edison Middle School, and the answer, I went to the Building and Grounds Committee, he has not gone. You know, I respect him, but I'm losing the respect. I tell you, when the committee, ADHOC committee also, there's a lot of discussion on modular construction, and we have provided the example of Edison School, and why the gentleman, our engineer, does not visit. You know, when the elected members are asking the cost, no, we will not give you the cost until, on the proposals, until you're thinking of it for the referendum. Then only we will go with the specs and get the cost. All right, guys? There are examples what have happened in our state. Already, the examples are there in middle school of Edison, how it, how much it's costed. I went along with some members in December to the middle school of Edison, and for the 10 classroom of modular classroom, they spent 1.6 million dollars. So, now, we are asking for trailers. Last meeting, I asked how much it cost, $450,000 for four classrooms trailers upfront. Then, I heard this $3,000 rental fee per month, so it is going to cost us around $630,000 lease money after five years, nothing. It is gone. We throw away. What? $630,000 are gone. Here, we have to save money, taxpayers' money. So, I request that reconsidered, and they built, they built middle school in Edison. They had modular construction done in four months. So, I'm very disappointed that, again, we come back and, you know, administration comes and put pressures on the BOE, think of the students, you guys think of the students, do the homework there. And second thing, I went to the BGNT, ADHOC committee, I congratulate, you came with a good recommendation, but the practicality of passing the referendum are discussed. If you are building a intermediate school...
Prakash, your time is up.
Yeah, I'll come back after this. Thank you very much.
Anyone else to address the agenda? Yes, just state your name and address, please.
My name is Ravichandran. I'm from Fortin, Burn Court.
Hi.
So, there are quite a few points out here. So, number one, to start off with the proposals, I agree with you, the lady out there, and also I agree with Mr. Palori, that, you know, I attended some of these meetings, and it's kind of hard to determine, you know, what's the plan, what's the right plan, what's the most optimal plan and the best plan for the kids, right, without knowing the cost, because the question that I think a lot of us have is, with this proposal, if the costs are prohibitive, then it's going to push back the timeline of what are we going to be doing, right? But, at the same time, to his point, you know, it's hard for someone to, someone to come in with a cost estimate. So, thus, I would like to get some answers in terms of, you know, what's your timeline projection for a practical solution? Number two, I think the lady out there, Dr. Alvich, mentioned that there was only one contractor for this modular unit. I would imagine that there's no bidding process, right? So, how come there is only one contractor? Maybe, I don't know. Maybe there's only one out there. So, that's question number two. Let me stop there.
Before I forget, let me answer one of your questions. We certainly want to move this process as fast as possible, as you saw that my colleagues on the board all are agreement of this, but in order for us to have the earliest, we can have a referendum would be December, and to do that, we have to have, obviously, we have, you know, we have to have all the paperwork in by June 16. That's...
Into the state.
Yes, that's all to the state by June 16. So, we're under the gun. Anyone else in the public?
Can I make one more point? With regards to these trailers, I actually tend to agree with the gentleman out there that we should probably have some permanent solutions out there, even if it's kind of a modular, that doesn't look like a trailer, because honestly, having trailers is going to have much more implications for the society, because the house prices are going to be driven by the schools, right? Anyone coming to Monroe, they say, oh, God, these guys are trailers? Really? You won't even have trailers in terrible countries for schools. So, I know you guys are strapped with cash and all that, and on your handset pipe, but that is a serious implication that one has to consider for, maybe if you raise expenses, if you raise the cost for this, and we go to the public and say, you know what, if you put trailers, your house price won't go up, but if you put some permanent structures, then you are likely to see house prices going up. It's in the interest of everyone, right?
Thank you. Anyone else to address the agenda?
Ram Raghunath, 6 Owens Drive. I guess I wish I had 10 minutes, but I know I don't have that. Again, I commend Michelle Arminio, right, for really raising the right points. That's what the...
Ram, can you talk into the microphone?
Sorry. I commend Ms. Arminio for raising those excellent points. I think that's exactly what many in the public had. You know, if you roll back the videotape for the last few Board of Ed meetings, you can see I had been asking persistently, how can we speed this up? Can we focus on just the high school expansion? Can we have a referendum in March just for the high school expansion? You know, and now I suddenly hear, right, by September 5, clock is ticking, right? It's, we always end up making poor decisions when we have these artificial barriers in front of us. Let's just recall about a year back or even less, high school was an afterthought. It's like, only if the middle school passes, then we will think about high school. What happened now? I think maybe we can even pull along another year without expanding the high school. Again, it's not a fully informed thought there, but I feel there is a possibility. I really think we should push for the modular expansion. I am surprised with Mr. Teig. I don't know whether it's, I should call it dereliction of duty, or, you know, when someone said, trust the administration, I don't know that.
You know, I have to stop you with that. I think Mr. Teig is the consummate professional. I don't think we get anywhere by degrading...
No, 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 but let me not lose, I'm losing my time. I don't want to lose my time.
I'll answer you when you're done.
Okay, please, yeah. Because it's interesting, right? What I understood is Edison has the modular units from the same company that we are doing the trailers. Think about it, right? And we asked in, when was this? The ADHOC committee asked in August for information and data and numbers, and I think this email from last night, like a desperate email is what is the answer. I hope someone is going to look into that and see what went wrong here, right? And then suddenly, we have the September 5 date. Very, very disappointing. The other pieces, I think I agree with Mr. Paluri. Maybe I may not agree with everything he says, but I agree with him that this should be called a feasibility study. It should not be called a design, because you, again, I heard many times now that what was told to the ADHOC committee was to come up with a qualitative assessment. I mean, I didn't know that was the limit upfront, but that means there's no quantitative assessment done, so it's not fully baked. So, we should call it feasibility. We should not get into this design paradigm, because we have been burnt already twice. Spend money on design and nothing came up. So, I really hope that we do it. And then the last point is, again, the numbers, the demographics numbers, we've been asking so many times, and as Prakash just said, you know, the growth, if you look at it, it's very small. Over the last, from 2015 to 2019, we have only 430 new students added net, right? And so, it doesn't correlate with the numbers we have been hearing, and of course, I feel now that the ADHOC committee has been a little bit, their hands have been a little bit tied for them to be able to really do a thorough job without having these demographic report and numbers. So, I really urge this committee, right, please, let's look at the modular expansion. Edison has done it. We have exactly the specifications. We should be able to move fast, and I ask, again, can we wait for another six months, for a year, for the high school and not do a rush job for September? Thank you.
I'm just going to say a few things that I think are necessary. Number one, demeaning one of our district office personnel, a man who's been here for 30 years, who has done and continues to do an excellent report, an excellent job, has the respect of every board member I know, past and present, is not the way to express yourself. I think, you know, you could say you're disappointed about something, but to demean him is not necessary, and I object to that. If you have a question, I think you have to direct that question not to Mr. Teig, but to the superintendent's office, and then you'll get, you'll get a response, and I hope you can consider that in the future. It's how we speak to each other that's important.
No, but it's also important, as Prakash just said, he wrote a letter to Mr. Teig asking for this, right?
I understood what he said, but I'm talking, but I'm talking about the comments.
No, but it's okay, because you have the public, right? I think the public has the right to comment.
It's not okay.
And this has to be looked at. Something has gone wrong here. Between August and now, why is that Mr. Teig will go to...
Right now, you're out of order. Your time is up. I'm going to be answering you now.
I didn't hear the beep.
Yeah, I'd say, your time is up. What I'm going to say also is the immediacy of the need at the high school has been expressed not only by the high school principal, but our administration, and those are our experts. That's who we have to go by. We cannot just assume everyone is an expert because we're all not experts. They are the people that we depend on. They are the people we trust, and they're giving us their advice, and they're getting expert advice. So, you know, we have the high school principal telling us, we need this now. Our superintendent is telling us, we need this now. We need this now, and we're going to work on this. Anyone else in the public?
One second, Mr. President, to answer his question.
Why don't you save that for, you know, other board business or something, someone can say that. Okay, yes.
Pradeep Malam, 4 Jake Place. So, what changed in the last five years or six years enrollment data that I have in front of me? On high school, we increased only 303 kids in the last six years. For the last six years, if you anticipate this much of growth, what are you expecting next year? Why can't we wait one more year to have high school expansion? Why can't we wait one more year to have high school expansion? If you put four trailers over there today, it will hamper all the ideas that people are throwing out, is going to jeopardy, because we have a five-year lease on these trailers, we can't put anything over there, we can't put on this side of, because there is already trailer, and all these things will come up. We are strongly opposing, and the growth numbers are nowhere near for the emergency. You can, you can, you can consolidate some office space in the high school for four classrooms. That's point number one. Point number two, today there was a, there is going to be a second reading on transportation policy, okay? In the transportation policy, the wardings are being changed in certain way that the people are, let me read it out, from the existing policy and what is the next policy is going to say. In the existing policy, the board says, the board will provide, will provide transportation to and from, blah, 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 blah. Now, in the new proposal, it is saying that the board may provide. Where is this getting from? Okay? And in the previous say, in the previous policy, it says, any hazardous routes will be designated by the board. Now, any hazardous routes should be designated and approved by the board. Where are we going with this transportation policy? Has this transportation policy has been reviewed in BGNT meeting? I'm done, this is my question. Has this policy has been reviewed by BGNT or not?
No. No policy.
No, it's reviewed in policy, not BGNT.
Yeah, but policy is going to affect BGNT and everybody in the town.
Well, I just answered you.
Does this, we need to read in the BGNT or not?
It's reviewed in policy.
No, policy is going to affect everybody in the, in the, in the town, and in the certain departments. Has all policies been reviewed for finance, financial viability?
Do you have anything else?
And if tomorrow somebody says in the, because the policy committee says, I don't want any, any more expansion, are you going with that?
Pradeep, I can't make any more comments, other than it's reviewed in policy.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
Gazala Bora, 1 Miko Drive. I had a question about, when was the last demographers report prepared for the district? When did we pay for the last demographers? 2015?
I, from my memory, Mr. Chair, I think it was 2018. I think that the board and the committees and the ad hoc committee used.
Seventeenth or eighteenth, one of them, seventeen, eighteen?
So it was after the, was it after the student growth advisory committee made the recommendation? Did we get another demographers report after that one?
It's in process.
So there was one done during the redistricting. Did we do one more after that, would be my question, because I know we did one during the redistricting?
Right.
And then, from what I know, there wasn't another, but was there another between then and now? So the point I'm trying to make here, and I'm going to cut to the chase, is that when we established the whole procedure for another ad hoc committee after two failed referendums, why did the board not see the need to, to get a new demographers report, seeing that our growth projections weren't really going the way at that time, when the ad hoc committee was established? So I feel like we missed a step, and because of that, we are getting delayed, we cannot for sure say, the plan that the ad hoc committee has come up with is going to be adequate or over adequate or under adequate, because we are playing with old numbers right now. So I feel like this was something that should have been taught about by the administration before the process started. And yes, I do want to say something about the ad hoc committee's election. They did say a lot of plans were asked, I think the plans were cherry picked, and the ad hoc committee members were cherry picked, and that's my opinion as a taxpayer, because of what I observed, of how many people applied to be on it, and how many people were on it, and who were on it. Again, like I said, it's a very personal opinion, the board may or may not agree. The last thing I want to talk about is the item J and K on the agenda for the trailers for high school. The ad hoc committee did talk about modular construction, and Mr. Teig was sitting in those committee meetings, and he was listening, and he was asked questions, and I understand that he is not, you know, he's not supposed to work on ad hoc questions, but at that time, as per this agenda today, the conversation for the high school trailers was ongoing with Mobile East Modular Space. That is a company that also does modular classroom construction. So my question is, for a very skilled and adequately paid district employees that we have, why could they have not looked at that possibility four months ago, when we had the time? It, all it took was asking few questions off the record to the same company that we are in conversation with, to get these trailers, and knowing that they build these modular classrooms, and that our neighboring town was building it, I think, being in the business of, you know, of what they do, they would be talking to people. If they're not, then there is again something missing out here. We are constantly doing things retroactively as a district, and that is what is hurting us and is hurting our children. We could have been proactive four months ago, when that conversation was on the table in the ad hoc meetings where Mr. Teig was there, Mr. Gorski was aware about it, and we were in discussion with the same company that gives modular classrooms. And why could we not find out, get some information, so that when the conversation came up officially, we had answers, instead of saying, we don't know, we have to go find out now?
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Yes. If you have an answer, I would love to hear it, otherwise I'm going to go back. Thank you.
In order for us to get information, that information has to be adopted by the board and sent to the administration, that's, that's what we're talking about.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The ad hoc committee, as I said before, did have an enrollment study that was fresh and usable for their deliberative process. It was not more than a year or two old, and the projections based on those were reliable. We update the demographic report every year, and the ad hoc committee discussed the desire to update it, which we are in the process of. It could not have been updated any earlier than January of 2020, and we informed the board of that, at that time. Mr. Teig is a consummate professional who has saved this district millions of dollars in design costs and construction contracts through the years. When the criticism's coming, why didn't he consider modular additions instead of the trailers? You have to rewind back to the board's budget philosophy meeting. You have to rewind back to all of the budget, all of the bond referendum presentations that administration went to. Over 30 presentations, we talked about Plan B being trailers coming if that referendum was not passed. The difference between trailer renting and modular construction is millions of dollars in the capital budget, which this district doesn't have. Edison had a balance in their capital reserve account that, that they squirreled away for the purpose of these additions and that funded it. We don't have that. The board, through the budget philosophy, acknowledged the need for these trailers at the school, based upon the representations from the school administration, and that's the proceeding that Mr. Teig engaged in. And the, the board has tonight the resolution for the trailer lease that is a requirement for safe and adequate facilities of the high school for next year.
Just want, thank you, Mr. Gorski. You know, our operating budget has been depleted, and I've said this numerous times, 50% over the past two years. We are in a difficult situation. We have upcoming negotiations, we need money for, for new contracts, and that has to come out of the capital budget. We're just financially strapped, and we have to do the best we can with what we have. Next person.
51 Violet Court. I request the board to consider modular construction instead of rental, because it's in the best interest of taxpayers.
Thank you.
Good evening. Chrissy Skirby, 21 Preakness Drive. I, I think the important thing that we all need to remember is that we are one community, and you need the community to get behind whatever the board is going to do. So I think it's very important that the administration does listen to community members that come up and that have raised questions and have asked for information. The recommendation of the ad hoc committee, I, I think that anybody who comes forward and gives their time and does work for the community and takes all that information and comes up with an opinion, that it should be looked at very carefully, and I do commend everybody that was on that committee for taking the time out to do that for us. However, it is important to note, that is one opinion of individuals based on no information, no cost information, and no correct numbers, no updated demographers report. So the board needs to understand that. This is one opinion. There were several proposals, I did read all of them, there were proposals that talked about adding additions on to elementary schools, adding additions on to the middle school, adding additions on to the high school, not constructing a brand-new school. I think it's important to go back and look at what the community said. While we talk about our administration being the professionals, they put forward two referendums that failed. The public did not want those referendums. So when we sit here and say, trust, trust what? We put forward, from the administration recommended, two referendums that failed. They did not listen to the public then. And Mr. Tofano, I commend you for what you brought up at the Buildings, Grounds and Transportation Committee meeting, that it is important to realize that there are, there is a large number of residents that did come out and say that they do not want a new school put on that golf course property. And it's important to note that the ad hoc committee did not recommend any location for the school, just a 5, 6 building. So that comes to the board to decide where to put that. Again, there's so much miscommunication, so much misinformation. Dr. Lehman, you came to my house with Mr. Goodall, you did the, the referendum presentation, and the message that was out there was that the high school was okay. Now we're in a crisis mode. I mean, which is it? Last year, we weren't in a crisis mode at the high school. Members of the public, myself, coming up here saying, we were overcrowded, we're told, no, we're not. Now, it's like you're putting a gun to the board member's head, saying, pass this, otherwise you're going to hurt kids. Because we can't take an extra few months to look at what Edison did for a very affordable price to have a permanent structure. We want to lease something that won't be ours and spend all of this money, because we have no time now. It, it's a crisis, we're going to hurt kids if we look at a modular that we can own. The message to the public has to be consistent. You want us to believe you, then you have to be honest every step of the way. The story changes every six months. It's a crisis, it's not a crisis, we could build here, we can't build here. You know, it's frustrating as a resident, as a taxpayer, as a parent. I have two children in this building. Yes, it's very overcrowded. I don't know if you can make it next year or not, I haven't seen any numbers. If you don't, if we don't put the trailers on, can somebody answer? What will the children not get? What courses will not be allowed to be held? What classes will not be offered? Can we, do we know that? Or are we just saying, we need them? With no information?
Skirby, your time is up.
Can you answer that?
I don't have the exact classes that they're going to have, that's, that's up to the high school administration, we worked with the high school administration, but I can tell you that we have one, our transition program for our special needs students. We have students that are moving into that program, I think there's 13 or 14 students moving into that program, and we don't have a room for them.
We need the four trailers for that.
And for that, and for other, other classes to be able to accommodate the schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mrs. Skirby, I just wanted to clarify, I wasn't at your house for the presentations last year, was it me?
Oh, you're right, it was Mr. Teig, I'm sorry, you're right.
It's okay.
You're, you're right. It was, it was Mr. Teig saying that, right, that the high school was okay. I'm sorry, you're, you're, I'm sorry. I apologize for that.
Next person.
My name is Ganeshwar, 283 Morning Glory Drive. So, I was at the ad hoc committee meeting last time, and I agree that I spoke to Teig, and I also spoke to Andy Paluri on that day, and the modular construction did come up, and some people were not supporting it, some people were. So, where I'm again repeating the same thing, that we knew that modular construction will be good for us, and back one year before, right, when the referendum failed, we knew that we wanted to do high school expansion. So what I'm saying is, why didn't the board go with all the options, and now, right now, we had the time where we want to go and just rent these trailers, rather than owning this, owning the permanent structures? So I'm saying that we should, as a board, should work hard to get what we need, which is best for our kids. The second question I have is like, the referendum played, the, the last referendum failed two times, and the last one failed in March, right? So where are we with the next referendum, and what is the board doing to put the next referendum by November? Because it's like, one year has almost passed, and I don't see anything, been talked about referendum, or when is the new referendum going to be coming up? And, so we, we need the referendum, next referendum faster, that's what I'm trying to say.
The only, the state only allows you to do referendums six times, I believe, throughout the year. The earliest we could do one now would be, I think, December 20th, and to do that, we have to have all the information to the state by June 16th. Now, it's not just a few papers, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Gorski, there's roughly about 16 agencies that we have to send information to, and, you know, we'll do what we can.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, but what I'm saying is like, the other towns, right, if they can do the referendum faster, why not our town? Why not our town can do a faster referendum? Because it's like two years, and we don't even know whether we are trying to meet that December, December deadline.
I can't comment how another town, you know, did it faster, my, my, my feeling is that nobody's doing anything faster than anyone else can do, because if it's in New Jersey, they have to apply to the same state agencies, it's the same procedure, so we all have to follow the same, same procedures, no favorites are being played there.
Okay, and for the first question, can you answer that, like, why it did, we take so much time, because we knew that we need the high school expansion, then why we are at this point where we want to vote for the rented structures and not the permanent structures? Can you answer that?
I'm trying to understand.
When the last referendum went down, we, it went down by a lot, it went down by over, over a thousand votes each question. So at that point, the board decided that they were not going to just go forward with the same referendum again. We can go out quicker for a sec, for another referendum, if you go out with the exact same plan, and there's only a cost and change. So I know, in, there's only a change in cost. When the board decided to do that, that's when the board decided to go and start the ad hoc committee process and reach out to the community. So that's what's taken time to get to this point. The board didn't direct anyone to go out and do a referendum or to do modular classrooms at the time, because they were waiting for the recommendation from the ad hoc committee, which now we have, so now we can move forward.
But I still urge the board to do, whatever it can to do a permanent structure, because we'll be wasting a lot of money just to renting this, renting the structures. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Lynn Fasowski, 388A, Arlington Lane, Rossmore. I'd like to comment about two things. These enrollment numbers that we publish month after month, while certainly are valid, do not point to the problem of what the capacities of these buildings are. So that when we look at an increase of 300 students in the high school, for instance, as was pointed out by one of our speakers, that's all well and good, except it doesn't show that the high school is not meant to accommodate 2,400 kids. Okay? The capacity now, at 2,400, is far beyond the building capacity of that building. So the comments that folks are making, that these numbers are of no significance, because we don't have the expansion of students that this is suggesting, is incorrect. So I strongly urge the board to consider revising the format of this information, so that people have a better idea of, in fact, that we are 1,500 or 1,600 or pushing 3,000 kids over the space. That's the first thing. Second thing is, Mr. Nikotinsky commented a couple of times, and I certainly appreciate that, about the fact that Mr. Teig did not. that, about the fact that Mr. Take did not request information regarding modular construction, except from one company, and the reply that we got from the company was that they couldn't really reply. As a former member of the ad hoc committee, I'm making this comment. We, the committee, did not ask Mr. Take to do a survey of modular construction companies. We asked him to inquire of the one company that was mentioned in a proposal that we received from someone in the public. We did not ask him to contact Mobilees. I have no idea what that company is, except from what I'm hearing tonight. We didn't ask him to contact them to find out what they could do for us, the committee. Every time I pressed the issue of Jerry, God bless him, about, "Jerry, what's this going to cost?", his comment was, "Linda, I have no idea, because it depends on what you decide to build." So, we can't have cost information until, as Mike has said, we do a feasibility and come up with some rough designs of what we want for our population here in the township. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Gotham Gate here, 3 Mico Drive. Two years back, when the referendum was put in front of public to build a new school, everybody believed in all the data that was presented to the public, and every active member was rallied behind the idea. It was narrowly defeated. The last year when the referendum was presented, it was very clear, before it even was presented, that the order in which it was framed is wrong. The need of the hour is high school expansion, because it's economically feasible over creating a new school, even though the BOE disregarded public opinion, and, and the wordings were confusing, and it was pretty much said that the referendum is going to fail. I just want to point that out, to make a, make a point this time, that if board considers and lesson learned from last failure, is to focus on the need. As it is, as the president just said, that there is a need of high school expansion, and a dire need. So, I recommend board consider expanding high school over building a new school. There is a distrust in the public, that the board, for one reason or other, is hell-bent on building a school, and particularly on that public space that town has acquired. That's my first point. My second point is, related to agenda, the, the, the schedule for 2021 is not out yet. Is there a reason for the delay? The, the way it's associated with the agenda is...
The school's schedule?
Yes.
That's on the agenda tonight?
Okay. Oh, it is on?
Yes.
So, is there a reason for the delay? Because I, I noticed that a lot of towns has already given out the schedule.
Do you believe this is usually when we do it?
This is when we do it. I just asked Dr. Oliver, I wanted to make sure, usually what?
And one other thing regarding the schedule, so the spring break for Monroe is not aligned with almost any of our neighbors this time. Was, is there any particular reason?
I, I think we do what we do. I don't know if we work to align our spring break with other ones, but Dr. Lehman, can you explain that better to me?
So, when we develop the schedule, we do look at schools and districts who have, at the time when we're creating it, have published their schedules. This year, it actually lines up, we tail, we finish with Easter, and the week prior is another holiday. It's consistent with several districts around us.
I looked at it, only Edison is aligned with us. None of the neighboring school districts are, they have a spring break after hours.
Old Bridge is aligned with us, Robbinsville's aligned with us. One of the Brunswick's is aligned with us, one of them is not. East Windsor, let's see. Where are we here? East Windsor's aligned with us. So, it, it depends on who you look at. I think this year, with the way the holidays line up, they're a smidge earlier than usual, so not everything, not every district, some are doing the week after Easter, some are doing the week before Easter. And it also has to do with when districts are starting this year. It's such a late start for some districts. We're going back before the holiday, some districts go after the holiday. And then to answer your question about why we wait till when we wait, the earliest we can secure the graduation site is after the December break. They won't, we reach out in the fall, and every fall, they tell us to reach back out after January 1st. So we reach back out the day we get back from break, we secure the date, and then we put it on the next board agenda. So that's really the timeline, and there's no way we can project any further than that until we secure, because this year, actually, we didn't get our first choice for the last day of school, so we had to have a little flexibility in the schedule to...
I would assume this time also, the, the, the kids are going to start attending after Labor Day.
Excuse me, sir. Time, time is up. Dr. Oliver, I just want to make sure, but we, our focus in, in developing a calendar isn't to align with other districts. That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, it's driven by our professional development schedule.
Right. It's internal.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening.
Hi.
Michael Olewski from 50 Mayberry Avenue. Yeah, I just want to let you folks know that I felt really good with the work that we did on the ad hoc committee. But I'll tell you what I did not feel good about, was the wording in the resolution you folks passed tonight. You know, one, I was quite surprised to see us honing in on the driving range property. It seems as if somehow that's a fixture at this point in time. Just concerned, because I think there are a lot of people in town that voted against the referendum last time, because of the driving range property. And the other piece that I was not happy with, because it, it wasn't there in the resolution, and that is some good consideration of innovative construction techniques and innovative contracting strategies as well for the, the new school. And I kind of gather right now, it sounds like now we're going to be rushing to put together a package by June 16th, so we can get a referendum, I guess, for vote in December. Maybe the right thing to do is to not rush, and try and accommodate, what, the concerns, wishes of people with regard to the site, and also, make sure that we explore these alternative construction techniques, like modular construction. I know I spent some time looking at the state website, where the state talks about how they've done contracting of schools for the affordable housing districts, and they apparently have all kinds of different ideas that they themselves have used. And, yeah, I just don't get the impression that we're really looking at this careful enough, to make sure that we come up with a, a, a good solution, cost-effective, cost-effective solution for Monroe. I think we have a good plan from the ad hoc committee, but I'm just concerned, that going forward, that things get handled properly, with enough care, so that we come up again with a cost-effective solution.
Michael, if I may, I just want to thank you for your work on the ad hoc committee. Always good suggestions, and I appreciate it. I, I just want to say, you know, because I know you've been involved, that there was quite an exhaustive search for properties, and this was one that was an outstanding choice, and this, we've had this way, way back when. The other thing with the voting, I mentioned this at the last meeting, I was very disappointed in the number of eligible voters that voted. Only nineteen percent voted. We got to get more people out to vote, and it certainly doesn't reflect the majority of the town. It reflects, you know, the, the vote is the vote, you know, but it, we need to get more people out to vote, if we're going to talk about what's viable. So thank you.
Yeah, little side note, I know at some point, I noticed that the, the, the number of voters that came out in the Edison district was half of what we had, only ten percent. Pretty amazing.
Unfortunately, yes.
Hopefully, there'll be more next time around.
Yes, me too. Anyone else?
I'm Sarah Aziz, 3 Launcelot Drive. I served on the ad hoc committee. We were not asked to come up with multiple proposals to present to the board, we were asked to come up with a singular concept. We would have loved to provide price tags on all the proposals, but unfortunately, it's very expensive to get price tags. Architects and other professionals need to be hired to get those price tags. So we sought public input, and we narrowed down our proposal to one that seemed to get the most public support. I understand that there are some people who are not happy about the golf site, but the public also needs to understand, this may be the most fiscally responsible options, and all the necessary approvals have already been obtained. There are not many sites to choose from, and finding a, a new site and obtaining all the necessary approvals could cost taxpayers a lot of time and money. Further, the time spent looking into additional sites may not be in the best interest of our children, who are already in overcrowded classrooms. I'm not happy about the idea of trailers in the middle school, and I think trailers in the high school, but I, it might be a good temporary inexpensive, expedient, expedient means to alleviate the overcrowding there. I believe Mr. Gorski said the difference between getting the, the trailers and the modular construction is significant, that we just don't have the money to get the modular construction. I asked the board to move forward on all of this in the most expeditious and cost-effective way possible. We need to start this process now, and as any delays will cause an impossible situation at the high school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sirji Ravidran, 38 George Allen Code. I just want to say, again, thank you for being on the ad hoc committee. I think they did a great job. Couple of points. One is, if, if the, if the ad hoc committee did a qualitative assessment of proposals, I think, I agree with some of the comments made, that we should have not just one plan, but we should assess multiple plans to, to do a quantitative analysis and see what's best. Because without doing that, you really cannot say what's best for the public, right? You have to look at the cost, you have to look at the benefit, you have to look at the, the numbers of enrollments and so forth. I really urge the board to look at multiple suggestions or plans that the, the ad hoc committee came up with, and look at, and do a quantitative analysis on that. So that's number one. The number two is, the comment that you, Mr. President, made about the, the voters who came out. Oh, I'm sorry. So, yeah, the, the number of voters who came out to vote. I think if we plan this in a way that it is more aligned to a general election, or more, you know, the November date, we might have a good chance of getting more people out, rather than doing it December, because you'll have the same problem in December, where, you know, a lot of people may be out of town, the winter break and so forth, and you may have even less people coming out towards. That's something that you want to keep in mind. The last comment I'll make is, I've come to these meetings quite a bit, you know, quite a number of times. Every time I see there, there are things that are, you know, that we are rushing through, things that we have to get done. I think we should take a step back and think about, how can we be a little bit more proactive, right? So how can we do a better job of estimating or assessing these needs? I know that today may be too late to look at some of the things that we have to do for the next school year, but look, look forward maybe two years, five years, right? So we need to have a real good plan in terms of the things that we have to do for our district, and, and start thinking now for next two years, five years. I think we certainly have the talent, it just need to, I think you need to have that focus to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address the agenda? Not seeing one. Anyone else, so we can move on to Dr. Lehman's report?
So, former Monro Township High School band students auditioned and were accepted into the New Jersey All-State Wind Ensemble and Symphonic Band this past Saturday at J.P. Stevens High School in Edison. The four students auditioned against the top students from across the state, and earned the top honor of qualifying to perform in New Jersey's most elite ensembles. The students will participate and rehearse with the entire all-state band at the NJMEA State Conference in Atlantic City, and culminate their achievements with the New Jersey All-State Performance at the NJPAC on Sunday, February 23rd. So this is the first time since 2017 that the Monro Township High Schools had band students earn all-state honors. In addition, these four students marked the most the high schools ever qualified in a single year. One student finished first overall in New Jersey on the Alto Clarinet. The other three students represent three out of the four top percussionists in the state of New Jersey. So congratulations to the students, their instructors, Ms. Megan Alexander, Mr. Marty Griffin, and Mr. Yale Snyder.
That's fantastic. Can we give more? That's what we need to get out.
Yeah, it's good stuff.
What we're doing.
A student from Albigar School entered one of Scholastics' writing contests, called the Great Pumpkin Contest. She just found out that she was selected as one of the five winners nationwide. She made an amazing PowerPoint presentation all about pumpkins and their usage. It's a great accomplishment, and I just wanted to make sure we recognize her. We've been talking, we're going to bring these students to a future board member, or board meeting, so we can actually meet them in person.
Great.
And then, a similar event to what was presented tonight with the Pride Presentation, with a different demographic of students and parents. Mill Lake hosted a special education reading night on Monday, January 13th. Two self-contained teachers from Mill Lake presented reading strategies used in their classes that can be utilized by their parents and guardians at home. The Monro Township Public Library was again present, and shared information and online resources, and issued library cards. Students read a book, they participated in an activity, and had a snack, and then they were reunited with their parents. The parents were then able to read a book to their children and practice utilizing those strategies that they had just learned, with staff present to help kind of coach them through that, to offer support and feedback, and all the students were able to take, and families were able to take books home. So, a very similar night to what we just saw. It was a great evening, so.
Thank you, Dr. Lehman. Superintendent's report.
Okay. So, the board members have in front of you a copy of the district's goals action plan with an update. So I'm going to, I'll go through it relatively quickly, in the interest of time. This will be placed on the district website tomorrow, so that every, so that everyone, anyone in the community can take a look. So these are the district goals that were developed by the Board of Education back in August, I think. So our first district goal was to engage the school community in the development of a strategic plan for Monroe Township School District. I'm very happy to report that we are moving on this plan. Last Tuesday, January 14th, we had our first strategic action plan meeting. We had about fifty participants, including staff, parents, community members. Administration did a very quick state of the schools update for everyone who was present. Then, New Jersey School Boards Association took everyone through an activity to identify the strengths and challenges in our district. The state of the schools presentation, the agenda and outcomes from the activity are on the district's website. And I want to thank everyone who attended the first meeting, and our second meeting, even if you missed the first meeting, you can still come to the second or third. Our second meeting will be held February 24th, right here in the High School Media Center at 7:00 PM. And this evening, evening's agenda includes activities to create our district vision for the future, and identify expectations for the future of our schools. So please join us on February 24th at 7:00 PM. So, as you can see from the action plan in front of you, we are moving toward meeting this goal. And we will have a meeting in February, there will be a third meeting in March with the community, and then from that feedback that we receive from the strategic action plan process, the administration will then go back and create an action plan for a three-to-five year strategic plan for the district, based on community feedback. So that is the first goal. Our second district goal is to develop a referendum project by working with the community using the latest enrollment projections to address student growth. Again, we, the ad hoc committee, and we've talked a lot about this this evening, there was an open meeting for the public to, to review and provide feedback on three proposals from the ad hoc in November. In December, the ad hoc committee met and reviewed those, and then they brought the committee, their recommendation to the Board of Education, where Mr. Masters brought that this evening. So again, that is another thing that we are moving forward with in the district. The third goal, it was to continue to focus on the whole child by providing resources to address the social-emotional needs of students, professional development, and cultural awareness. This is an ongoing committee. We have over seventy-five staff members, including teachers and administrators who are on this committee, working in six subgroups, to meet the goals that the, that the whole child committee from... from last year developed. The first goal is actually to create a crisis response protocol. This committee is meeting regularly. They are actually working on policy that they are hoping to present to me and then we will take to the policy committee within the next month or two on what happens if we have a crisis in our school. What is the, we have a crisis, we have an emergency response plan, we have that in all of our schools and across the district, but what happens if, in the event that there is a crisis, how do we support our students and our community afterward? So we're working with experts, we're working with the New Jersey Lost Coalition and George Scott, who oversees that program and working to create that. So that's an ongoing committee, looking at memorial, memorials, looking at support for students, looking at ongoing counseling or things that we need in our schools. So that's an ongoing process. Number two, the second major activity under that goal was to start creating year-long courses and mini-courses throughout our district for our staff. And that committee is continuing to do that. They have identified texts that we are purchasing through Title Funds for our staff to be using, looking at mindfulness, looking at being at growth mindset, and making sure that those texts are also kid-friendly. At our middle school and our high school, we look at the WICOR strategies, which are avid strategies that also promote organization, collaboration with our students, so it's a piece of the whole child. Continuing to look at multiple trainings that are happening, even within our schools, our principals are conducting trainings during faculty meetings, so there's a lot going on there with professional development. We are looking forward to February 14th, which is our next half-day in-service day in our district. It is actually a staff wellness afternoon. Each school has a committee that is working on activities for the afternoon for teacher wellness. We want our teachers to be well, too, so that they're well to work with our students.
Valentine's Day.
And it is Valentine's Day, and they have actually named it Staffentines. So, and they're very excited about doing this. And again, all of these teachers are doing this through committee work and all of, anything that's being purchased for that, for that day is being purchased through Title Funds, through the Title IV Funds, which are whole-child school safety funds. Another committee is working on the idea of Wellness Wednesdays, and we've had multiple Wellness Wednesdays. This is happening at the elementary school and the middle school. They, in November, all of the lower elementary schools created a gratitude chains, and you saw them hanging around the school, so each student added a link to the chain of what they're grateful for. In December, they had a lesson in their classroom where they actually got to dress in pajamas and bring a stuffed animal, and they learned breathing techniques by laying on the floor and placing the stuffed animal on their belly and making it move. So it's those breathing, those mindfulness techniques to help them. Some of our upper elementary schools have done kids-teaching-kids mindful health lessons, looking at healthy foods. And the middle school does mantra Wednesdays, where all of the students are, you know, learning a mantra to try and help them. January really started this for them, new year, new mindset. Number five, parent nights for the school year. We had our whole child parent night on November 18th. We actually expanded it through K to 12 because we had several committee members that, last year we did it for the elementary schools, and they said, "But we want to have it for the middle and high school, too." So we probably had over 100 people there. Parents came, some children came also, and some of the breakout sessions included technology to aid mindfulness, and these were all done by teachers in our school. Building resiliency, movement in the classroom and at home, my kid SEL at home, mindfulness and play for the young child, benefits of mindfulness and meditation. I don't have to read all of them to you. But there was a lot going on that evening, and every parent I spoke to and every parent that was leaving thanked us for doing it and wants us to do more. So this was an extension of what we did last year. So it was exciting that it grew and we saw more. I'm not sure where I am on the PowerPoint. The next one was an SEL survey. So we did give an SEL survey to all of our students in grades four through 12, and then we used that data to try and see, okay, where do we want to support our children the most? What it came up with is resiliency and grit. Not really surprising to us when we came up with those needs. And from that, this subcommittee then went and looked for resources that they then shared with building principals, who are then sharing with their staff. So we will continue, we will do another survey administration after testing in the spring, before the summer, to try and see how all of our practices have helped. The last piece is our character education programs in our schools, and there are pages and pages of activities that are happening in each of our schools, and each of our schools did contribute to this part. So I'm not going to go through every piece of this. Again, this will be on the website tomorrow, but every school is doing something, and it's one of their school goals, to support all of this work with the whole child. And it's very exciting to see, and again, I'm really looking forward to February 14th to see how that works out with our, with our, with our staff.
Thank you.
So with that, going to personnel, it's recommended that the board approve the attached personnel items A through AI by roll call.
So moved. Second, Mr. Mayo. Second, so moved by Mr. Chiarella. Any discussion, questions? Mr. Gorski.
Roll call, Mr. Nikotinsky. Nickatinsky, I beg your pardon.
Yes.
Mr. Rutske.
Yes.
Mrs. Kolpanovic.
Yes.
Mr. Plori.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mrs. Siegel.
Yes.
Mrs. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Reibach.
Yes.
The board president, personnel items A through AI under superintendent's report has passed.
So under board action, as was requested at the last board meeting, you'll notice that the HIV cases that were presented are separated out based on who the board members were in December. So letter L is actually the December board meeting HIV cases, letter M is the January 2nd HIV cases, letter N is the appeal. So it is approved, it is recommended that the board approve the attached board action items A through P by consent roll call.
So moved. Second. Okay. Mr. Chiarella, second, moved by Mr. Plori. Any questions or comments? Ms. Arminio.
Okay, I know I'm a favorite tonight, boy. One of the electronic surveillance policy in the school buildings and on school grounds. It's mandatory, but I have to point out, if it's mandatory, I guess I have no choice but to vote for it. However, it really, on a personal level, scares me that on 7441, page 1 of 4, it says, "Recordings may be used to monitor and observe the conduct of school district staff, students, community members, and other persons in the school buildings or on school grounds." I get that safety is our number-one concern, we want to keep all safe adults and children, but maybe because I'm a gal of the 60s and 70s, it's, like I said, on a personal level, I don't want our children to be used to living under surveillance. So I'd like some explanation, I wish our attorney was here, about why this is mandatory, and I just hope it's, look, and I'm not saying it again, but I, there's always a concern that it may be subject to abuse or just misuse, not intentional, but surveilling us on a regular basis, to me, is an anathema to our freedoms in this country. So just a little scary to me. Again, if it's mandatory, I suspect I have to vote for it, but I really wish we could, we could go back to the state and ask for the language to be changed. I mean, constant surveillance is not healthy in a democracy, in a liberal and free society, so.
Mr. Plor.
I agree with Ms. Arminio on that in terms of, but unfortunately, the matter of fact is that the whole world knows where you are right now because you're using a cellphone.
I understand. Well, not me. I...
Whoever uses a cellphone.
The point I'm making is that we're getting very comfortable in our society with constant surveillance and constant, and I just wanted to point that out. It's unfortunate. Now, and again, I know it's safety, and I know everybody's on social media, and we know where everybody is, but we're sort of getting too used to that. And I'm afraid for our children. I mean, if we choose to do it as adults, where our children are constantly being surveilled, and things could be misinterpreted if we're constantly watching every little thing, and it could stifle creativity and just normal social behavior. It's just a comment.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Gorski.
Roll call on board action items A through P. Mrs. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mrs. Kolpanovic.
Yes, except abstain on letter N.
Abstain on N as in Nancy. Thank you. Mr. Plori.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes to all, but recuse on N.
Recuse of abstain.
Recuse on N, so noted. Mr. Rutske.
Yes to all.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes to everything except letter L, recuse on that.
And your vote on L is?
Recuse.
Recuse, thank you. Mrs. Siegel.
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio.
Yes on everything, abstain on N.
Thank you.
As in Nancy.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes, on everything except recuse on L.
Recuse on...
L.
L, thank you. Mr. Reibach.
Yes.
Mr. Board President, board action items A through P has passed.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Alvek. We're up to business administrators report.
Thank you, Mr. Board President. Noteworthy on my report is two items. The first is the consent roll call. I draw your attention to the trailer lease. The financial terms of this lease are disclosed to the board in your packet, and they are as follows. The monthly rental for the trailers is $3,150 per month. The upfront costs for installing the trailers, including teardown at the end of the lease, is $481,382. So the initial year's payment requirement is $519,182, but every year thereafter will drop to $37,800 per year. So Mr. Board President and members of the Monro Township Board of Education, it is recommended that board action items A through K be approved by consent roll call.
So moved. Have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Mr. Rutske, second. Any questions, comments?
Go ahead, let Mr. Nikotinsky.
Two questions. Are we going to cut any programs if we don't get these trailers? That's one. And the second one, are we going to cut programs if we do get these trailers? Because it's gonna, we're gonna go, it's gonna come out of our operating budget.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
To answer that question, I remember a few moments ago, Dr. Alvek saying that one of the special needs programs required one of those classrooms. There are requirements for the other three trailers as presented by the high school administration, although we don't have the itemized detail tonight what they will be used for. So there is a potential for cutting of classrooms if there is not adequate space to host the programs. I can't answer it more definitively than that, I'm sorry. The second part of the question, will there be cuts to the programs if you, if this resolution is successfully passed tonight? And that's hard to answer until the budget is compiled in its entirety. I suspect at this juncture that the budget will be over cap, meaning over maximum spending authority, when we compile all the requests that have made it through the defense rounds at the schools, and there will be some program and instruction revisions beyond newly proposed items to the budget. But, but again, until that comes more into focus, it's hard to answer with any definitive answer.
Ms. Arminio.
Okay, I'd like to understand the difference, no, I know the difference. I mean, in the operating budget, we can, we can rent and lease these trailers, I got that. I'm wondering if we had an option to put the constructed modulars, if I may say that, similar to what Edison has, if that can be, apparently we don't have the money to spend almost $2 million, is that correct, out of the operating budget for this year?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
That is correct. We do not have $2 million in capital reserve for an estimated modular structure to be placed at the school.
Okay, so if it were possible to do a very, we're talking about a referendum perhaps by November, December, if it were possible to make the, that cost into a smaller referendum to show the public that indeed we are trying to downscale some things for the high school, instead of having the addition, that expensive addition to the high school, if we put the modulars into a smaller referendum, that might suit a lot of things. One, we will have, we will have this, we can get maybe 10 modular constructed properties for, for the high school. Two, they'll be permanent, and they're, apparently their life expectancy is like 20 to 30 years. And they may be suited to also, and if we put them in the right place, they may, it may give us the opportunity, when we do get around to building an addition, to leave those in place and still have the opportunity to build our addition. So my thought is, again, being a, being a member of this community since 1980, and I've watched a lot of decisions being made in a crisis mode, in several, in the six years I've been here as a board member, it saddens me that we're, we are always pushed to this point where we're told we have no choice. So I'm wondering if we could table this J and K until February. So I would call for a table. I know we have to have a vote on it.
Yes, motion to table is a priority motion. Is there a second to the motion to table? Because it requires a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. So a motion by Mrs. Arminio, seconded by Mr. Nikotinsky. To table...
Until February.
To table what items?
To table J and K until the February meeting in order to perhaps do some research.
No, I beg your pardon, Mr. Chair, a priority motion goes right to a vote.
Yep.
Can I ask a question before we vote?
No, we have to go right to a vote. It's required to go right to a vote.
Right.
So this is a motion to table, business administrators report items J and K till February. Motion made by Mrs. Arminio, seconded by Mr. Nikotinsky. Mr. Plori?
No.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Mrs. DeMayo?
No.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolpanovic?
No.
Mr. Rutske?
No.
Mrs. Siegel?
No.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Reibach?
No.
So Board President, motion to table fails.
It's okay, it's okay. It failed.
So if you wish, Mr. Chair, we'll have a roll call on board action items A through K, and then I would like to introduce separately the bond refunding resolution, which requires a public hearing specifically on that item.
Absolutely.
Everybody's fortunate, we don't have to read it this time because the information was sent to the board in advance. We were under a little bit of a rush last time because of the urgency with the interest rates. So board action items A through K, as moved by Mr. Chiarella, seconded by Mr. Rutske.
Mrs. Kolpanovic?
Yes.
Mrs. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes, except for no on J and K, please.
So noted. Mr. Plori?
Yes.
Mrs. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes to everything, J and K, abstain.
Abstain on J and K. So noted. Mr. Reibach?
Yes.
It's Board President, board action items A through K has passed, and at this time I will introduce briefly the bond resolution. We discussed this at the last meeting, this is a required second reading and public hearing on the resolution. And we have some advantageous information to share with the community and the board. I asked the board's financial advisor to update the projected savings from the resolutions with today's interest rate environment as opposed to the December figures I was provided and gave the board at the last meeting. And rates have, have gone down and become more favorable, increasing the savings in each one of these series. There's two in consideration. First is the 2012 series. It is a $34,365,000...
It is a $34,365,000 par to be refunded. The average interest rate is now 4.42 percent. Keep in mind, you have to exceed 3% net present value savings in order to proceed. And last meeting, I disclosed that the savings on that over the nine-year remaining bond life was $1.2 million. That has now swelled to just under $1.5 million. Also, I disclosed last time that we were considering part or all of the 2015 series. That's a larger bond series in the par, in a par amount of $50,205,000. That has now come into strike range where all or most of that 2015 series should be able to be refunded. It's a matter of doing an analysis and seeing if including all of it pulls down the net present value savings to a detriment, and maybe some of it should be left unrefunded. I mentioned that it was about a million dollars in savings on that one last time. That has swelled to $1,150,000. So we increased about $400,000 roughly since the last presentation. So, similar to a budget resolution, um, you have in the, the board agenda, the resolution for the bond refunding. I would ask the, the board to make a first and a second, discuss it, and then open it up for public comment before taking a vote.
So move.
Second.
Um, first, first would be board discussion. Are there any questions on that?
Any questions from the board?
I, I have, I have a question. So now, I understand the, you know, the refinancing. I understand what we're doing here, and I think, I think it's great. The, the, what I'm gonna ask you though is about the reserve fund. So if this materializes where we do see a $1.1 million savings, what, what does that? Is there a portion of that that goes back into our reserve fund in some fashion from maybe the general fund in order to recharge that fund, which I, which I think is a very important fund to have funded. I'm using the word fund a lot, but you get my point. I'm just, okay.
Yes. Um, the question goes to can, what, what can you use these savings for? And, uh, there are two separate and distinct funds. The general fund, which pays for all of the program expenditures, teacher salaries, benefits, utilities, repair and maintenance through the district, everything to run the school district. And then there is a debt service fund, which is separate and distinct. It's got its own set of books. And it, and it budgets each year for the amount of principal and interest that is required by this district to be paid on previously issued bonds that built all of the schools in existence. The savings from this bond refunding, which is approximately $2.6 million, can only be used to offset the requirement to raise principal and interest on the amortization schedules that are ready in existence. So it will lessen the, the obligation of the community to have to pay through the debt service tax levy at the current rates by paying less for the refunded amounts in the future. It's significant. 200 and, $2.6 million is about a quarter million dollars each year that you're shaving off of the debt service tax levy, which will have a, a, an effect that the taxpayers will feel with that relief. You cannot use that savings and transfer it into a reserve, although it's a creative idea, nor could you appropriate those savings in any other way. These are specific and distinct to the, the debt service fund and can only be used to reduce taxes on the debt service levy.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And we said that, that you are refunding them to the original end of the, the bond series, right?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for bringing that up. The refunding bonds will not exceed the time duration of the initial series. They are not being extended in any way. They will have the same duration as before.
So, and that is approximate, and I'm sorry, I forgot.
It was, uh, it was, it was nine years on the 12, and it was about, um, 15 years on the 15s.
So, so is that a total savings of 2.6 million on both bonds, if we can do it?
Yes. That is a conservative estimate of what we're seeing today for both, after all issuance costs and refunding costs are included. That is net of all costs.
Okay. And that savings, I know we talked about it as being a gift last, a month, uh, last, um, meeting. But it's a savings over, that's six, 2.6 million is a savings over 10 to 15 years based on the?
The majority of the savings will be recognized in the first nine years. The smaller portion of the bonds with the lower interest rates will extend out to approximately 15.
Okay.
But starting this next budget that we're doing, the 2021 budget, you will have a reduction in the debt service levy to the tune of approximately a quarter million dollars from this refunding.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, I'm sorry. One more.
Sure.
So, so what is, uh, the, I know you, we don't have a definite interest rate until we set, we settle it. What is the range right now?
The average interest rate for the combi- combination of the series is about 2.74 percent.
Okay. Cause I just happened to hear the, the free holders did something similar in their last meeting, and I thought it was under 3%. They redid their bonds as well.
It's very sensitive to the duration. I don't know theirs. Ours is nine years and up to, I think, 15 years.
Well, it's under 3%, so I'm satisfied.
A lot of theirs are annual issuances, um, so it depends, you know, time value, money and all that.
Thank you.
Mike, just to be clear, we still don't, we still don't have an exact rate, and we still don't have a credit rating.
I, I have a call scheduled for 11 o'clock tomorrow with S and P, where we're, they're going to go through a, a plethora of financial statistical demographic information to give us a rating. Um, a lot of it's available through the issuance of our comprehensive annual financial report and our budgets every year that has to be posted online. But a lot of it's specific to Monroe, and they're gonna get that through the telephone conversation. So as far as the credit rating, I would be shocked if it changes anywhere from the A, A minus that it is now by S and P, which is an extremely attractive rating among the highest for school districts. As far as the pricing on the bonds, uh, we expect to sell the bonds the, um, the week of February 3rd, 2020. And, um, keep your fingers crossed that rates stay where they are or actually go down by that time, because that will be the strike point. And I will notify the board and the public of the actual numbers once they are materialized.
Any other board member for question? I guess we can open it to the public?
Oh, I'm sorry. One more. I apologize.
That's okay.
I, I, I just real, this is a public, this, there's supposed to be a public, um, hearing on this. This is a very important document, in my opinion. I would ask the Board President that in the future, we do this. When you're gonna have a public hearing on something this important, we do that in the beginning of the meeting. It is not fair that the people have sat here. It's almo- it's 9:30 at night. It's after 9:30 at night, and most of the public has gone home. I think it is very important that we do something like this in advance of other things, because the public has a right to speak on this. And they're, half of them have gone home. To no fault of their own, to our own fault.
I'll certainly take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, that's it.
I'm done.
Anybody from the public want to speak on this issue of the bonds? Will you come up to the microphone?
No, no, yeah.
You gotta do it the right way, Linda.
I went to Rutgers. I have a degree in accounting. I do not remember how to calculate net present value. Michael, sorry. So the bottom line is, we can't do anything special with this savings except reduce our debt service. Can we use, can we use the money that we're not gonna be then sending out to prepay the debt in any fashion?
The money is restricted to reduce the obligation of the current amortization schedules by lessening them with lower interest rates over the same duration. Your second question was?
Well, it's always an advantage, like when you have a home mortgage, which my husband and I did, you know, a long time ago, and prepaid extra every month to reduce the duration of the debt. Can we use the savings to help prepay these bonds that are gonna be with us for nine or 15 years?
Not in the way you described.
Okay.
Because the, the savings are over nine and over 15 years to come. They're not, they're not upfront in the first, uh, year. However, depending on the call schedules on the bonds, when you own a municipal bond, that's a callable bond, it has a date on there where the issuer can call it back. These, the call dates on these go, uh, of three, three years on the one range, and the other one, several years into the future. They're called advanced refundings, where we're borrowing money, putting it in an escrow account until that call date. All of that still comes into the, the savings that we recognize here, but they must re- be returned to the taxpayers in the form of a reduced obligation in the levy each year.
So, okay, taking this down to my tax bill, everybody else's tax bill except yours, cause you don't live in the township. What impact would this kind of reduction in interest rate have on our tax bills, if any?
It, it depends on the ratables each year. But the overall debt service levy, uh, will be reduced by about a quarter million dollars a year. I, I can't answer that specifically until I, until I have the ratables and depending on your home value.
Okay, but it could have a positive impact.
But I, I think it will be positive, and it will be, uh, it will be something you can feel. In addition to that, we've refunded, um, with this, over $10 million worth of bonds that, that has lessened the obligation on the debt service fund over time.
Okay. So then going out to a referendum at some time in the future, is this going to be a potential offset to our further borrowing?
That's an excellent observation. This will be a tailwind to the referendum because it will reduce the required obligations for the existing debt structure going forward. So you could layer it with the new debt on top, and it won't be as bad as it was before.
Right. Okay. Good selling point. Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the public?
Just a quick question. How does this impact, um, or does it impact us, um, when we go, uh, out for budget, um, when we go up to the 2% cap?
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Uh, the debt service fund, as I mentioned, is a separate fund than the general fund. The cap only pertains to the general fund, where the levy can only increase by 2% with minor adjustments each year. There is no cap on the debt service fund because the township has obligated those bonds when you approve those referendum, referendums previously. So this is not affected by a cap.
Okay. And how much, how much do we increase when we, when we go to the 2% cap? Was it around two, two and a half million a year?
Uh, Mr. Chair? It's between three and $4 million, depending on the adjustments that are available for enrollment and healthcare adjustment.
Okay. So we increase our budget every year by roughly 3 million. Um, this can help bring down 250,000, um, of that, correct?
That's an awkward comparison because you're talking-
Well, I'm just saying, you're saying that we could see a real, it, it can make a real difference in our tax bill, but if, if we're increasing by 3 million, and this is taken down by 250,000, it's really not making, we're still gonna see an increase in our taxes, is what I'm saying. If we continue to raise the budget every year by 2%. I just think that we need to be clear with the public. You're not gonna see a reduction in your taxes if we continue to go to the 2% cap every year. You're gonna see a reduction by 250,000 in the debt service, but if we're continuing to raise by 2%, we're still increasing the budget by 3 million that is being paid by the taxpayers. So it really, you know, you, you kinda need to be clear that you're saying, yeah, it, it could be a tailwind for the referendum, and it could offset costs, but as a taxpayer, my taxes are still gonna increase. It's not, this isn't gonna give us a decrease. I think it's great that we're doing it, any money that we can save. But I think, I think this board a lot of times, or this administration likes to tell residents that you're gonna see a decrease in your taxes, and we don't, and that becomes a frustration. But I, I commend the district for doing this, and any money we can save, you know, refinancing this is, is great for us. But I just think that we need to be careful when we tell residents that you're gonna see a reduction in your taxes. That's all.
Anyone else? Name it, just please.
Prakash Purab, all the discussions went over my head. Simple question. Simple question. If, it is like refinancing my mortgage so that the interest I'm paying will be reduced. Some way, something that logic for the simple person.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
That is a very simple analogy. Yes. It is, it is akin to refinancing your home mortgage.
Okay.
It reduces the amount that you would have to have paid previously, cause you're now refunding the same amount at a lower interest rate.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Not seeing anyone else who can close that, uh, public session.
Mr. Chair, I just need a roll call on the, uh, the resolution.
Absolutely.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
I know.
Yes.
Mrs. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Plori?
Yes.
Mr. Reibach?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Mrs. Siegel?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kolpanowicz?
For Mr. Plori.
Yes.
Mr. Board President, uh, motion passes and savings feels good, doesn't it?
Yes, it does. Taking a small break feels real good right there. Okay. Move it along. Board President's report. Yesterday, Dr. Alvik, Dr. Lehman, Ms. Dagorsky, County Executive Superintendent Kyle Anderson, excuse me, Mrs. Kolpanowicz, Mrs. Arminio, Mr. Plori, and myself, school district administrators, Senator Greenstein, Assemblyman Benson, and D'Angelo. Did I miss anybody? Let me know. Met with Education Commissioner, Dr. Repalet, and a number of his staff at the Applegate School. During a planned tour led by the building principal, Mrs. Graziano, we were all treated to the fantastic sounds of our student percussion group led by Mr. Yale Snyder. I have to say that Dr. Repalet, after it was over, went and congratulated every kid, but also took the mallets and played the xylophone. And I said to him, "You've got skills." He was really, it was very impressive. I, I was very impressed with that. The tour was to show our visitors the dire need of the physical plant. He went to the boiler room. The building, and the boilers from 1936, you know, right? Was shown closets that are now offices, an area that floods easily in bad weather, a banned room and cafeteria that are too small for the number of students scheduled. We didn't sugarcoat anything, and the building principal did an admirable job. We then went into the media center for a candid discussion. Dr. Alvik did an introduction describing some of the history of Monroe, where we are today, and the fact that we are now at a tipping point caused by ever-increasing enrollment and our aging facilities. Our fear is that the class sizes will increase, and years of educational gains will now diminish. She also discussed our increasing special education population, as our programs are outstanding, which attracts new residents. Our board members made excellent points discussing funding, development, and taxes. Our appeals were not only to the commissioner, but to the legislators, uh, present as well. Here's what we asked for. Cap relief due to enrollment, trailers, facilities. reinstatement of rod grants for facility needs. Other options for grants to help our district. Immediate relief to the budget to the tune of $10 million. The tone of the meeting was positive, and the commissioner asked us to work with our legislators, especially in the area of relief for trailers, which he felt had the best chance for success. He would avail himself to us. I felt it was a very positive meeting. I think, uh, everyone felt that way as well, and, um, we'll see what happens. We're certainly giving it a try. Thank you. That's all I have to, uh, say. Uh, other board of education business. Anyone else? Ms. Arminio?
Go right ahead, honey.
Mr. Plori?
A couple of things-
I thought I heard something going on.
I'm sorry?
It's okay.
I, I wrote a few things down, and I, I think, I wanna start off with the, the initial, uh, the pride presentation, and, uh, you know, one of the high schoolers talking about Malala, uh, who's from Pakistan, and actually, I met her in person with my kids, and she's certainly a teenage kid, but extremely inspirational, if you ever get a chance to meet her. She came to Radon Valley Community College three, four years ago. Uh, that's where I met her. Uh, one po- point of observation is that, uh, last Friday, uh, the middle school had a National Honor Society, uh, induction of 140 kids. And to me, that's a great achievement, something that we should all celebrate. My only request is that, uh, I think all the board members should get an invitation, uh, to attend something like this and encourage our kids, um, in a, being- attend something like this and encourage our kids in, being inducted into a, what I call is a, it's a middle school Hall of Fame. So I, I think we'll receive that for the high school, but not necessarily for the middle school.
Good point.
I recommend that. And I'm attending a lot of winter concerts thanks to my daughter playing in ensemble, so I'm, I'm learning a lot and really extremely talented kids. And as we saw yesterday morning, when the commissioner showed up, these kids played and he was so.
They were fantastic.
Inspirational that he actually went behind and started playing the music as well, so that was, was pretty good. One thing that I wanna say is that our, Dr. Alvik actually promoted this event for mentorship that an organization, nonprofit organization is conducting for district students. Mostly the middle school and high school kids are actually mentoring the younger kids as a part of this, and I think that's an excellent thing as well. I like the idea that was presented that along with the enrollment, we should add another column, if you will, that shows the capacity of the buildings, so this way they can compare what they're comparing against. And the last one that I have is coming from the, the business world for, of doing projects. I think every project should have a scope, schedule, and a budget, and I think that's where we're heading. But I think more often than not, we don't talk about the schedule. We talk about the scope, we talk about the budget, we don't have a timeline. What I would like to see is to see how, for us to be able to put a referendum in November, if we can. I know, I know it's challenging, but I want, you know, we should be challenged. As, as a board, we should challenge ourselves and we should challenge the politicians who may throw a roadblock to at least help us in pushing this, to make sure that it happens, coincides with the main elections. Create a timeline and understand what items are the, on the critical path and what are the items that can be run parallel to make sure that we're moving ahead in, in the right direction. I know.
Those are excellent points, and I know they've been brought up before, actually, and I think that's something that we need to look at. I know you and I had an informal conversation about, about this and I'm absolutely in agreement that we have nothing to lose when we ask our legislators if they can intervene to try and push things along. Absolutely agree. I mean, if we don't ask, we don't know.
Yeah, and I will promise to go through you and Dory Alvik to make sure before I contact a new legislator.
Thank you.
My, my goal is not to overpass anybody, but I wanna make sure that things are getting done.
Yes.
And I think creating this schedule and for our own sanity check, maybe once in a month to see if we're on schedule, off schedule, see what we need to correct, because I think the, we see a lot of friction being built between the, some of the public that comes to the meeting and us purely because of the time that it takes for us to act, and I think that needs to be expedited. That's all I have for today.
Anybody else?
I have a comment. So, um, last month, Michelle and I went to visit two Edison schools and we looked at, um, they have ten modular trailers, you could say, inch location. I must say I was very impressed. I think the, we definitely need to look into it. I know we're going Monday.
We're going Monday.
Yeah, to look at it again. And I just wanna let you guys know that Edison spent under one point nine million dollars and the other one was one point six. They used two different vendors. We, we discussed that before.
We did.
And I, I think we, we definitely need to look at for next referendum to save the taxpayers a lot of money, so.
Anybody else? Ms. Arminio?
I'd just like to remind the board, as I often do, about the Open Public Meetings Act. That allows the public to speak freely. There was no disruption, there was no dis, disrespect, in my opinion. The content of, of a member of the public's speech, you cannot ask them to, to stop speaking if there, there was no cursing or anything foul or anything like that. There is a lawsuit that, or, or a decision from the courts against, I think it's Wes Windsor, and I don't know the name of the person who voiced it, but that the Board of Education lost because they, they objected to the content of the public's speak. So I would remind the board that the public has a right to speak, they have a right to criticize, that's what they're here for. They are, are governing, to me, they are our governing body.
Well, let me just respond. My, um.
You didn't have, I mean, I was just making a general comment, but you're welcome to respond. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you. I, I, my reaction to that was to stop people's, as a matter of fact, they said what they said, but it was my response in, in defending who I thought was an outstanding employee.
Well, you can do that, but I don't think you can ask the public to not say it.
I didn't ask them not to. I responded to them saying it.
That's fine. And I also attended the meeting with the Commissioner of Education and our assembly people and our senator. And I understand that one of the asks is to remove the two percent cap, but in my opinion, that's, that's not getting any help from either the state or the Commissioner of Education. Everybody, you know, certainly the politicians were happy to, to say, oh, sure, we'll, we'll help you remove the two percent cap. But when the two percent cap gets removed, all that means is the Board of Education can ask our taxpayers, our stakeholders, for more money. So I wanna be clear that that's not a gift from the legislature, it's not a gift from the board, the Commissioner of Education. It's to allow us to, to ask our taxpayers for more money. That's all, and an alleviation of the two percent cap is gonna do.
You know, I know you were there with us and I, I don't know if it was Assemblyman Benson or DeAngelo responded that the governor just, you know, is not in favor of increasing that cap, you know, he's.
You mean eliminating the cap?
Eliminating, well, yeah, well, making it higher.
Or making it higher.
Yeah, he's, he's not in favor of that. I know he's in favor of millionaire tax, but I think the main thing that we all, all of us did very well was to impress upon them the, the need that we have.
Right.
Here in this district.
Well, I, I just wanted to point out that there were many things that we asked for. That was the easiest one they could agree to because it wasn't gonna take anything from them. It would take from our taxpayers.
Yeah.
And that may need to happen, but it's not something that I would, that I'm happy about in the first line.
I'm sure, and I agree. I don't think it would be popular and I'm certainly not looking to raise anybody's taxes. They have to find a better way and, and.
Right.
And, and funding education in general.
And we have.
What they're, what they're doing is not acceptable.
We totally have legitimate reasons to ask for their, their help, their services.
Yeah.
I mean, Mr. Chiarella can, can attest to the fact that we have been asking our politicians, our representatives, for all the years that they've been in, in the Assembly and the Senate to help us out and nothing has come through. And I, I hope I can say this, we were talking to Sen, the senator and once alleged, last year, I think she put out an impact, builder's impact legislation and it didn't go anywhere in the Sen, in the Senate.
Oh, you and I were talking about that, yes.
Yes, and I asked her again to please put an, put another bill forward because once the legislation session is over, that bill goes away.
Absolutely.
So I, I would ask that we, again, ask our senator and assembly people to put in a builder's impact statement on the books.
I agree. I know you and I personally have been fighting for that for, I don't know, ten years, nine years.
That's my point, exactly.
Long time, and it's, and we're still waiting for it.
And we haven't gotten any relief yet.
And we did, we did speak with the senator and we did tell her, well, put it up again.
That's correct.
That, that did happen and she didn't say no, but nothing happened yet.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Pelori?
Steve, maybe, Mr. President, I'm sorry, to Michelle's point about two percent, as soon as the two percent was brought up, and I, I did mention that the governor vetoed it and it's not gonna be helpful. But the way I understood the commissioner's response to the two percent, to the assembly folks, is the fact that if that's approved, because we're not even eligible for, for two percent cap because that's only applies to the.
In that.
Folks who are impacted by the S two legislation. I think where the commissioner was coming from is the fact that if the cap is removed and other districts can get more money, more money can become available to districts like us. That's how I understood it because we did, both of us did raise the, the point and he still said that I think it's gonna help you at the end if that's removed, he said. So that's the only way I can explain it.
Well, that was, that was the one point he felt that we had some, you know, I guess leeway in to get, to get what we need. But who knows? We gotta see what.
Yeah, I would like to details on that because what you're saying is if the cap's removed, the state's gonna give us more money?
That's what, that's what.
But that's, but that's after we, after we ask our stakeholders to give us more money first. I mean, you know what I mean? It's a double.
And I think, I think they want us to work with.
That would affect us. All I'm saying is more money's gonna be in the bag.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Kalpanowicz, did you wanna say something?
No, the, the two percent wouldn't affect Monroe because it's only for those districts who are losing money right now, but the money that they would get would decrease their funds, therefore we would get more money.
Okay.
If, if they, if, okay.
Would decrease their.
Well, let's see, let's, let's wait and see.
We have to see the details.
We don't control that, we can advocate, but let's wait and see. Yes, Mr. Tofano?
I just wanna say it's, it's very difficult to get legislators to help with something we've been asking help for, for over ten years that I know of.
Yeah.
When they keep getting reelected. That's, that's the thing. When you keep getting reelected, you have no political will to change anything that is helping you get reelected.
Yesterday you said something that was, I think, quite some good. You mean, remember you said you could repeat that?
I, I would encourage the public to go on an email or letter writing campaign and, and let these legislators know that, you know, we're watching them this year. We need this help. We are at, at the tipping point and we really need this help and we need the public to reiterate that to these legislators and let them know, we're on a tipping point and you may be on a tipping point and losing your job unless we get some help that we desperately need.
Absolutely. We, we can only do so much advocating for, you know, the schools, the public, but we need the public's help to help us.
Correct.
And, and I'll say it again, they have to come out and vote. That makes a little difference. Anyone else? Okay, we can move on now to the public forum that doesn't necessarily address the agenda. Anyone from the public? Dr. Parab, you're on.
Yes, yes, thank you. Prakash Parab, thirty-three, they don't drive. Just, I'm going to change the topic.
I'm sorry to hear what you said.
Change the topic.
Okay.
Vaping has become a big problem.
Yeah.
Okay? So I'm seeing it. I see it among adults, children. So I think, I don't know where the damn thing, how we can do it. Only thing, educating them constantly, bombarding them with real facts, showing how the IQ of the students fall, how the lungs are impacted, how they are hospitalized, that is the way constant, showing them every two months or something. I don't know, I'm, you know, whether to start at middle school, we all know better than me, so look at that. And decriminalization of marijuana has passed the bill. But now, the recreational marijuana for medicinal purpose, I'm supportive, but recreational marijuana has not passed. Now they are planning our legislatures, you know, the government, they are planning to put, for the vote in November.
For, I'm sorry, for the vote?
Yeah, they are going to pass, they are going to take it to the people. You know, I was told yesterday, someone visited San Francisco after five years. It stinks like a skunk there. You know, the entire city stinks. So if we have New Jersey pass and start using that marijuana, imagine how the, you know, all our governors talking about pollution, climate, air clean, our towns will be stinking. So think over it, it will be there for the November election. It's not good for our children and they were telling, telling San Francisco, someone to get coffee, go to McDonald's, it takes five minutes because the smoke, the activity, the way they act slows down. It is a bad impact to us. So anyway, coming back, I went to the building and grounds meeting and the practical, you see, I, I love the adult committee, what they have passed, I love it. If I want to vote, I'll vote for it, but my main concern is whether that referendum will pass. If we build a brick and mortar school somewhere with the cost of forty to fifty million dollars, whether it will pass and that particular golf course, I don't know, public hate it, whether that referendum will pass. So there should be a plan B. So the plan B was discussed, that current schools which we have, can, can we put modular expansions and satisfy the need and what the cost is involved in it? So we have plan B also going on. So I'm thankful that our BOE members are, some of them are visiting Edison, I'm very thankful and I think Mr., is Mr. Take going with them?
Yes.
Okay, thank God, but thank you. Tell him thank you.
Okay.
Okay? So this is the plan B they discussed, so don't lose the fact that, keep this alive, think outside the box, if you like it, get the cost estimate. I don't know that there's a hierarchy in the government and the BOE members are elected members. When they request something, the district says, only if it is there in the referendum, we'll do the cost evaluation. Come on, guys, go out of the box, ask some where the, these models are developed, these types of schools are built, so give the estimate at least to them, you know? They are elected members, when they request you respectfully and even public, we are the taxpayers, we request something from the district, do it. Don't put, we have to go out of the box, then only we'll start stopping. If we go with the rules, hey, if I go to work for corporation, I'm going to work only with the rules. We are not going to think outside the box. Think outside the box, okay? That's the request. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Chrissy Skirby, twenty-one, Preakness Drive. I attended the BGNT meeting last night and it did sound very positive, the meeting that took place yesterday at Applegarth. And I just, you know, Mr. Pelori, you made some great points yesterday. You said the best chance that we have to get additional funding is to get a line item on their budget by March and that, you know, the only, the only people who can do that for us are the legislatures, those three, DeAngelo, Greenstein, and Benson. I guess I'm asking the, the district, the board, Mr. Pelori, maybe you from your committee, is there something that you're going to put together, maybe a form letter, maybe a petition, maybe something online that we can take and we can bring out to the parents through our various parent organizations, through our various community Facebook pages, to get people to get on board with this? Because, you know, a lot of people have given up. We have been disappointed many, many times. I've been one who've said, we're not gonna get anything, but, you know, it came out last night, I heard what took place at the meeting and it does sound, maybe this time, we can make a difference. You know, we could try, we, we need to try and, and we've said that for many years, we need to continue to fight for, for what's right for, for Monroe. So again, is there any, we, we say, write to them, you tell somebody, write to your legislature, they don't know where, they don't know how, they don't know what to say. Will the district put something together quickly? Because if we need to get that, if we need to put pressure between now, the end of January and March, we need to really get moving on that and really put pressure on them. And it would be great to have something to hand out or, you know, just to say, here, forward this email to this email address or, you know, forward this link and sign your name to it, so that they can see that, you know, our residents are behind this and maybe they will listen this time. You know, it's, anything's worth a shot, but if we need to put pressure, you know, help us, the residents, to figure out how we can help you do that as well. Because, you know, Mr. Chiarella had a great funding committee, we went, we marched on Linda Greenstein's office, we dropped off a letter, you know, and nothing came from it. But again, I, I'm still willing, and I know a lot of other residents are still willing to, you know, write a letter or do, do whatever we need to do to put the pressure on them.
I just asked Dr. Alvik, we can certainly supply that information as far as our legislators on the website and how to contact them and maybe, Mr. Pelori, your committee, committee could start taking up some follow-up with some ideas that will.
Mr. President, I, I think the request, if I may, the request was to create some sort of a memorandum that people can sign online, looking at it. I think that's what the request was.
Something, yeah.
And then let's get that to the, I think we could sort of look at that.
Maybe that, that could start with your committee? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Next.
My name is Maddie Raback, twenty-three, Riviera Drive. I am speaking for myself and only myself, and if people choose to dispute this and/or comment on Facebook about what I'm about to say, I really won't read it, nor do I care.
to say, I really won't read it, nor do I care. According to the First Amendment, we are all entitled to free speech, but I ask, to what cost? There is a scourge and cancer spreading in our district by certain people on Facebook which really only shows who they are and can only make themselves feel grander and more powerful by degrading others. It's time for us to move on and ignore what comments are made and instead work to get more aid from the state and get people out to vote for or against the referendum. As Prakash Parab, a member of a group I also belong to and a frequent speaker at school board meetings knows, I personally, along with many others, work hard to get out the vote locally, statewide and nationally. We need to work to get out the vote in Monroe. The use of video cameras at school board meetings is a good way to inform the public and remind them to vote. Unless there is a hot button issue, school board meetings are not well-attended. We have a responsibility to get the website out to voters so they can be informed as how to watch school board meetings and see for themselves what is going on. Last year's visits to inform the community at large about aspects of the referendum were poorly attended and to add insult to injury, 19% of the population voted, 81% did not. Middlesex County sent out applications to register to vote and to request mail-in ballots to all people eligible before the midterm elections. Perhaps, instead of spending so much time on Facebook, these armchair warriors can spend more time meeting and talking with voters to influence them to vote. Who among us has written letters, made phone calls repeatedly, emailed the governor, their senators and their legislators to state their case for more aid? I have. The BOE and administration cannot do it alone. There is power in numbers. I encourage our community to get active in lobbying our elected officials at all levels of government. As Einstein said, quote, "Weak people revenge, strong people forgive, intelligent people ignore," unquote. There is no power in degradation, vendettas, disrespect or distortion of facts. And I would also like to add, after sitting here tonight and at other school board meetings, it's quite amazing to me that all these people that care so much about where the school's going, what kind of school to put in, don't even bother to stay for a school board meeting to see what's actually happening in the district. It's quite appalling and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Yes, sir?
Suji Ravindran, A.G. George Allen. One clarification and a few comments. I don't spend a lot of time on social media, but I did read something about James Burke owing us money. Is that really true? And if that's really true, you know, what's the remedy that we're looking into, especially when our budgets are so stressed and we are looking to refinance and cut every corridor and see where we can, you know, get more money and save money? What are we doing to address that?
I'm going to let Mr. Gorski answer that.
Sure, of course, yeah. And I don't know if it's true or not, I want to clarify that. The second thing is...
Okay, let me answer your first question.
Okay, I have the four-minute limit, isn't it? The, in terms of contacting the legislators, I mean, we can do an online petition or maybe if you can share material. I mean, we are all willing to write to the legislators, call them. I mean, if it's data-driven, it might be helpful. So if you can provide any pointers or data, that would be really helpful. And I want to also appreciate all the, I mean, having, going to my son's music performances and so forth, I think the district does a fantastic job, really good music teachers. I just want to commend them, it's just fabulous to be in this district.
Thank you.
Yep.
We're going to have an answer for you.
Mr. Chair, back in 2010, the school funding laws changed and an agreement agreed to with Monroe Board of Ed and James Burke Board of Ed whereby James Burke recognized that Monroe's interest costs and tuition were going to increase because of this school opening, was nullified because the 2010 budget law by Governor Christie imposed a hard 2% cap on districts and a tuition cap waiver was eliminated. The previously agreed to tuition could not mechanically be raised by James Burke within that cap and an arrears grew. The maximum amount over the time was about $2 million of debt that accumulated. Monroe Board of Ed protected their interest in that money by suing James Burke and both districts spent over six figures in legal fees to no avail. There was no end in the process, to quote the state officials who got involved. So Mrs. Koloponowicz was Board President at the time, she and the James Burke Board of Education worked out an agreement that was approved by the board that recognized Monroe's high school tuition costs were decreasing over time. Because of the capped budget and the increasing enrollment, the per pupil costs were dropping. If you could fix an amount in the budget that James Burke was going to be required to budget to the maximum they could afford, eventually, the budgeted amount by James Burke would exceed the actual cost. That has occurred and I'm pleased to say that the $2 million of debt has dropped to below 1.6 million and is on target to be paid off by the duration delineated in the agreement.
And which is?
Thank you.
Just in time.
Time's on, thank you.
Mayor, pardon?
He asked for the date, which is, he said, what's due?
Oh, he asked for the date that it's due to be paid off?
Yeah, he said, which is?
It's got a few years left, I think there's about four to five years left on that agreement, if I recall correctly.
Which we hope will be three to four years in reality.
And in fact, if I may just add one quick thing, James Burke has actually exceeded their requirements by, delineated in the agreement by paying surplus money that they had available to the district to reduce the principal further.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Not seeing anyone who closed the public forum, have a closed session resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go with the closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6. Behave yourself. Folks, I didn't finish reading it. 10.4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects, harassment, intimidation and bullying. Following closed session action may be taken, the discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's 100%. Can we move that motion?
Andy, and how long do you think it'll be? Doctor Al?
15, 15.
10 minutes, he said.
Okay, we're back. I'm going to open it in a public forum for closed session items only, but I see nobody from the public, so we can move on. And the next scheduled Board of Education meeting is February 19th, right here in the high school. I guess adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
I said, I guess adjourned.
Second. All in favor?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, no discussion. This meeting is over. Thank you.